Welcome, everybody, to the December 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Welcome. We do not have the minutes from the last meeting at this time, so we are going to start directly by reopening the public hearing for the zoning ZC 1916 Watershed West.
Mike Jeffries of Planning and Zoning Department for the City of Fairhope. I went through the staff report at our last meeting since we're currently under -- still with the public hearing. I'm just going to give a quick summary of what was discussed, and I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have. As you know, this is a public hearing to consider the request of Googan Mills &amp; Kaywood GMC for a conditional annexation to Tourism Resort District that amends the original TR District established by RSA on behalf of the Retirement Systems of Alabama. The property is approximately 7.23 acres and is unzoned in Baldwin County, located south side of Old Battles Road across from Povner Place subdivision. Property lies between the current Lakewood Azalea Golf Course, holds two and three. If the approved subject property were approved, it'd be designated as the low-rise residential zone inside of the TR District. Then I'll leave up on the screen the zoning map, which is on your left, which shows the R1 zoning, PUD zoning across the street, the current TR zoning to the east, and unzoned Baldwin County to the west. On the right side is just an aerial zoomed in with the subject property outlined in white. Commissioners, if you had any questions for me at this moment, be happy to answer them, or you can, at your desire, turn it over for public comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff before we reopen the public hearing or before we -- the public hearing is still open. Any questions for staff before we start calling people from the public up to speak?
When is the time that we would be able to hear from our legal counsel about a -- some information provided by him as it relates to this? Now or after public comment?
You know, the public hearing is open now. We could go ahead and work through the public hearing.
Why don't we do that?
And then because that --
I'd like to have some info.
That could bring up a few more questions that we might have for legal counsel, because I see one attorney is listed to speak, so that might be a good time then to call in the legal counsel. I've got five people listed to speak. The first one is Ms. Virginia March, and if we could keep our comments, try to keep them to three minutes or less as much as possible. And if people have said what you have already heard, please understand that we don't need to hear it twice. And we have a pretty good idea with all of the letters and things that we've received in emails, we have a pretty good idea of the public sentiment on this particular item, I assure you, so.
She doesn't hear very well, just so I might have to repeat for her.
If you'll just let Emily know Mrs. March's address, please.
In addition to all my other -- I've lost a lot of my hearing, so I have to interpret if I don't understand you or anybody else, so I have to interpret here.
Certainly.
Except I will, in France, so many people, you don't speak this English language. Okay, my name is --
Your name is Virginia?
Okay. My name is Virginia March. My involvement with Lakewood as a resident started in 1972 when I was looking for a house to build, and nothing suited either to find in desperation. We said, "Okay, let's go see what Jim has got. Does Jim still have something in Lakewood lot for residential?" So we went to see him, and he says, "No, all the lots in Lakewood subdivision have been sold, and there are no lots for residential sale in Lakewood." You can, of course, oppose somebody who's bought a lot and it's not yet built. And I thought, "No, no, that don't cut it." So he said, "Well," he came back to me again the next day, he says, "Well, actually, there is a place. There is a one particular lot in Lakewood that is available that can be used as zoned as residential. It's not part of the Lakewood subdivision." And he explained, "Well, I'm living," and he showed it to me, and it was just absolutely perfect. This is a wonderful place for today's version of polite and classical. But then I looked at the plot, is Lakewood golf, we've built it, the golf, well, wow. And I thought, "Well," that gave me a little bit of apprehensionousness. What about what's going to go on in your future? And he said, "Don't you worry one minute about that. When we rezone this to have the condominiums, the brick in the Lakewood condominiums, I had this one particular piece of property on the edge of the lake rezoned or reconfigured," I might use the word incorrectly, sometimes my vocabulary is not correct, "as a residence." And I was saving it for me. But, okay, if you really want it, Virginia, you can have it. So with that, you know, I started to look at, you know, we've been looking at property. And then he's -- so I got a lot of, he gave me a plan, and all around this, on all three sides, was golf course. "That's pretty good, but what about the future? What's going to happen to this?" I felt somewhat of vulnerability about, you know, this whatever program. He says, "Honey, don't you worry one minute. I've seen to that. What you now look at and see is golf course, used for golf course. There's only one thing it ever be used for is golf course. That's the way it's written down there in Baymanet." Well, me, I'm not going to argue with Jim, but I can go down to Baymanet and see what's what. I take it, yeah, sure. So I bought a lot, and as they make some changes, I can get further setbacks because I'm approaching on the golf course of old planting. And I've lived there since 1974 with the goods and the best and the wonderfuls. But McLean was very, very adamant about telling me what I see as bigger golf course will always be only golf course. There will be no other changes. They should call it up there and maybe there. I think he had to realize that this is a highly unique place. And so much of that golf course and that hotel has made this part of the country. And he did not want to change what is so wonderful and so charming. If we start going down that route, then we lose our identity. And it will just always be, it's hard, what it has with us, no wonder how long. But that's, that has been my, 50 years or so of living in Lakewood. But then he was saying, "McLean," he told me, and I'm not going to argue with Jim, I'm going to look over his shoulder and know, he looks over my shoulder, to check it out. I say, "I believe that there's a, what you see is golf course. To be used as golf course is going to be used as golf course." That was that period. It was a law, and couldn't be changed. He wanted it that way. He wanted this to always be, yes, a Lakewood golf course. So that was, that's been our office. And I certainly hope this panel sees fit and the same idea that this golf course, as it is, as a golf course, is an asset to everybody around it. It gives an identity. And if we start to change it, I'm afraid that there might be a short-range change with somebody, but long-range, we'd be losing something very, very valuable, not only to us, but everyone around. When you speak of this part of the world, you say, "Oh, the hotel, the lot, the golf course." Yes, there's a difference in that. I certainly hope we don't want to lose.
Thank you very much, Ms. March. Appreciate that.
(Applause). 1-001, Woodland Drive, and there's always this argument between the city of Fairhope and Mobile Bay, and it's one of those things that, you know, I have to, I have to, so I guess I think of it for you. Yeah, that's all I have to say, what I live in.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next person on the list to speak is Tracy.
(Inaudible).
Yes, ma'am. We appreciate it. Done deal. I would like to say, as far as if there are any kind of restrictive covenants that deal with the property, what it can or can't be used for, that doesn't involve the City of Fairhope. We're neutral, I guess, for lack of a better term, on restrictive covenants or, you know, deed restrictions or anything like that. We just, you know, look at it from a subdivision standpoint purely. But Tracy Frost is the next person to speak. Thank you, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Usually my voice carries, so if you can't, please let me know. I can speak up a little bit. Hello, my name is Tracy Frost, and I am a new resident to Point Clear. My husband and I bought property three years ago and started a long project of designing and building our dream home. After a year of planning and 16-month build, we moved into our home earlier this year. You can imagine my shock when I was told there was a proposal being considered to build a subdivision on the interior of the golf course behind our home. This was one of the key reasons we came to Point Clear. We took about seven years to find the right place to build and invest a substantial amount of money. I've already submitted two letters to you and both the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the City Council, and I hope you've read my letters and that they clearly articulate my complete opposition to the request for rezoning as well as the proposed development of Watershed West. I would also like to ensure it is understood that I am not anti-development. There is a time and a place for purposeful development, and the proposed rezoning and Watershed West development is reckless as well as illegal. I understand the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to only make a recommendation to the City Council to either support or not support the proposal. However, your recommendation has influence and thus extremely important to this and all future outcomes. It places a great deal of responsibility on you to ensure the proposals are aligned with the planning and zoning ordinance and the application meets the nine key points of criteria necessary to move forward with a yes recommendation. We could review and consider all nine points together, however, time is limited, so let's simply look at a few of those which do not meet your criteria. Number one, compliance with the comprehensive plan. The development may indeed be in compliance with the Fairhope Comprehensive Plan. However, the land in question is in the county. Furthermore, the sliver of property the developer seeks to rezone is part of an established golf course in the subdivision which has never requested to be rezoned. This property is aligned with the Baldwin County Master Plan, which outlines the specifics for each geographic area to support and protect the natural resources, character, and quality of life of the area. The plan states very clearly, and I quote, "This community has a strong sense of identity and care for its environment and the landscape and will not be willing to significantly compromise for the benefit of growth itself. Growth on the eastern shore will need to characteristically fit with its history. This is not so different than the city plan, which states," and I quote again, "The Fairhope Comprehensive Plan is designed to achieve quality development reflecting Fairhope's unique community character while promoting and protecting the quality of life for our citizens. Watershed West does neither for the current residents, and basically you, the commission, and soon the City Council are being asked to go against the very ordinance in place to protect residents of this community against this type of development overreach." Number two, impact on natural resources, including existing conditions and ongoing post-development conditions. The development on which has already occurred in the surrounding area has forever changed the Azalea Golf Course and the surrounding areas. I am sure the golfing community has made this abundantly clear in some of the many letters of oppositions you've received to date. However, to carve out the tree grove portion of the actual course completely destroys the majority of the revered majestic live oaks and old pines while removing the shelter and food sources of habitat. While it may not be illegal for the landowner to destroy these trees, it does remove one of the best-known assets of Point Clear. Last, any development on this property will have impact on Point Clear Creek and Mobile Bay. This has been done time and time again with other developments, so why is this one different? It's not because stormwater projections are assured to be correct or information from an environmental impact study proved it because one has not been required. To assume zero impact is incorrect and irresponsible. Have all of you by chance had an opportunity to visit the site and observe firsthand what is being proposed versus the reality of what would happen with development at this site? The proposal states few trees would be removed, which is somewhat true. The developer would only have to remove a few to build a road and subdivide the lots. However, the responsibility would be pushed to the homeowner, who would be forced to remove century-old oaks to utilize some of the lots. And even while attempting to save others, damage would inevitably be done to the root system when foundations, driveways, and roads are poured. I know this firsthand. We built inland in Lakeview, in Lakewood, around beautiful old oaks, and we had to be very mindful of how we did that to protect those. Number three is the impact on adjacent and surrounding properties, including noise, traffic, visible intrusions, potential physical impact, and property values. This proposal is a blatant disregard to the property rights of all homeowners adjacent to and in the surrounding areas of the proposed development. As a property owner in Lakewood Club Estates, instead of the beautiful fairway and tree grove I currently enjoy based on our substantial investment, I would be looking directly into the front or back of a home across the then-narrow fairway. The proposed type of development would have very negative impact to my property value and all the neighbors living along Azalea Number Two and Three, as well as those across Battles Road and Povner Place and Point Clear Court. The noise and traffic will obviously increase for our area as well as the physical safety of those utilizing Highway 44 or Battles Road. Safety on the course would be greater concern with greater responsibility being pushed to the golfers. Houses being built with limited setbacks offer a perfect opportunity for physical as well as property damage. While you accept a certain level of liability in living on a golf course, my liability was minimal with 60-foot setbacks required through our covenants. Luckily, as outlined in our covenants, no development on the golf course is allowed without a vote among my neighbors, and that vote must carry 70% of the residents. This has not been presented to our neighborhood, so obviously, a vote has not occurred. How can you allow a developer to not only disrupt the quality of life we have a right to, but also ignore the applicable laws and regulations of our neighborhood, which is considered other jurisdiction and another point of your criteria? These are a few of the points, and as I stated above, all of our time is valuable, so I will not continue pinpointing the egregious manner in which this application fails your criteria. There is, however, one additional point I'd like to make concerning all I've learned and observed in this process. Baldwin County is growing at an alarming rate and appearing to be struggling to keep up with the infrastructure needs. We have all witnessed the fast and furious pace of development, which is changing the character of these beloved communities. There is an abundance of available homes in all areas and more planned development on the way. So why is the criteria not being more closely scrutinized to ensure all development is responsible and in keeping with the goals outlined for both the county and/or city plans? I understand how easily we can fall into a routine and simply check the boxes because the submitted information appears to be correct and complete. However, this application process is a glaring example of how telling part of the story will suffice to get the desired outcome. The city plan has reviewed and undoubtedly suggested approval based on the information outlined in his presentation, yet as demonstrated in my earlier comments, the proposal fails on many points. I am in no way accusing GMC of maliciously withholding details or conveniently not highlighting others, but simply pointing out that word choices, how numbers and statistics are presented can and will highlight those points most important to an achieved outcome or desired outcome. I spent my entire professional career in sales and marketing and learned to think about the things not being mentioned versus only listening to those being repeated. It helped me tremendously in business and making personal decisions. I urge you to consider a more strenuous review of proposals considering the Watershed West proposal made it through the recommendation process to rest on your desk ready for approval. The proposed development is not aligned with the city or county goals. It is offensive to the current residents and would only assist in continuing to chip away at the beautiful landscape and character of Point Clear. It is time for the city to do the right thing, to stop and consider the consequences of violating established criteria for the purpose of one and eroding the quality of life in our community.
Ma'am, you're about triple overtime, so if you could wind it up, please.
One minute.
We have other people listed to speak to.
One minute. In closing, I would recommend doing away with the TR designation for any future development. There is an abundance available in the market, and it is no way compatible with the master plans. And I know I can speak on behalf of several people in saying --
Oh, it's all right. She can finish.
What?
She can finish. We can let her finish. It's all right. Hey, let's be quiet, please. He's just doing his job.
30 seconds, okay?
Yeah.
He did tell me one minute. Okay, it's okay.
One minute, please.
I know that I, and I know I can speak on behalf of several people in saying, "We as a community are depending on you to oversee responsible development, which respects the historical character and supports the quality of life enjoyed by so many generations." I am asking the committee tonight to vote to send a resounding no to the city and ensure all future proposals are reviewed with much greater scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, I think it's pretty clear that we understand how everybody feels here, so if we could move through the meeting would be great. Pat Ashay is next on the list to speak.
Now, he won't be as nice to you.
My name is Pat Ashay. I live at 365 Povner Place, Fairhope. I live across the street from the proposed development, and my question is one more from a development standpoint. And under -- I'm sorry. Sure, sure. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's hard to get the perspective from here. My questioning is from the TR zoning district. It's my understanding that the TR was created for essentially the Grand Hotel property to begin with, and that all property had to be contiguous to be able to fit into that zoning possibility. Am I correct in thinking that?
No.
It is not correct?
No.
Not contiguous.
It does not have to be contiguous.
Doesn't have to be contiguous.
Okay. All right. I thought, for some reason, some of my reading, that I thought that was one of the criteria it had to be.
It had to be 175 acres minimum.
Okay.
But there are stipulations within the, and most all of us were not here at the time TR District was designed and developed. But the criteria within TR District stipulate that it does not have to be contiguous. They can have other properties added into TR District.
I knew it could be added, but I thought the regs said it had to be contiguous. I'm not arguing with you, I just must have misread. So that was the basis of my questioning. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Carol Sullivan, I believe is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Carol Sullivan. I live at 513 House Nest Place in the original watershed. We moved there in 2013. It was, the development started in 2011. We're on the periphery of the golf course and not the middle of the golf course, as is the application before you today. I happen to be an attorney as well as a homeowner and a member of Lakewood Golf Course. I'm also a golfer, so I'm speaking in a lot of different tongues. I apologize if I wade into something, but Adam Milam --
You still just get three minutes. You know, get three minutes for each of those calls.
Right. Thank you, thank you. I may not need all of them, but Adam Milam represents the Battles Road Preservation Group. He is acting as the attorney. But I've read all of his submissions, and I must say that I agree with Virginia March and him on these covenants and restrictions that flow from Lakewood Club Estates. Also, they've got the question of the marina that's been raised, and as I read the TR ordinance that was passed in 2005, to qualify for consideration for TR status in any application, the resort owner, in this case RSA, must have a full-service hotel, they must have at least an 18-hole golf course, and a marina. And I submit to you that when you look at the definition of what a marina should be, it should be what a marina was in 2005 when that ordinance was passed, and for every year since then up until 2019. We're talking about 14 years of acting under that ordinance. When the RSA, the resort owner, has acted under that ordinance, they had a marina that was a full-service tourist marina, not a marina for just the Lakewood membership. Today, you've got to be a member of Lakewood. You've got to pay a $15,000 initiation fee, you've got to pay dues, and you've got to pay a slip fee. So all these boats have moved down to Flyer Creek, they don't have a fuel tank, they don't dredge anymore, they pulled up the channel markers. It just isn't what the people intended, what the City Council of Fairhope intended in 2005 when they required this TR zoning. It's tourist resort zoning. You have to have a tourist marina. A tourist can't use the marina. A tourist can use the golf course, a tourist can use the hotel, but they can't use the marina anymore. It's not within the meaning of what was passed in 2005, so we shouldn't be talking about a TR application for the resort owner in this case or any case going forward. As a golfer and Lakewood member, we oppose this vehemently based on safety. The 10-lot major subdivision in the middle of the golf course should be denied. It invites motor vehicles into the golf course like it's never occurred before. We're talking about the interior of the golf course. We're not talking about the periphery. There are other cases, there are other situations on the golf course over on County Road 34 at Battled Road comes close to Section 3, where golf carts cross over. But you get a clear vision both ways if you're in a cart. There's another place over on a private road in New Lakewood, the same thing. You get a clear vision when you cross. And then over on the Dogwood Course between 7 and 8, you get a clear vision. But here, this situation is such that the cart path that comes off of hole number two over to tee box number three running parallel to County Road 44 is just flat-out dangerous. And if you put a gate in there at some point in the future, after you've spent two years constructing everything, the gate's going to invade the golf course, too. You're going to have garbage, city garbage trucks, city recyclable trucks, you're going to have FedEx trucks that are just, they can just blow through there, and some golfer walking and pushing a cart or a golf cart is just an accident waiting to happen. I promise you, it is an accident waiting to happen. And the membership regulate, rules and regs of Lakewood place the burden on the golf cart, the guy that's driving the golf cart. You've got errant golf balls. I mean, Lord have mercy, the two and three, what they've done to that golf course with those fences, you can visualize it, but I've walked down there since they put those fences up, and I can't tell you how many golf balls. I've gone over the fence or under the fence or through the fence and collected more golf balls in there. And those golf balls would be in people's houses, children playing out in the yard and what have you. But the way they've got the regulations, it's going to be the golfer's responsibility between them and RSA. Now, that doesn't absolve the city from responsibility, and it doesn't involve the city engineers from responsibility. They should know better. They're on notice now of the dangerous condition. And when you move forward, when you're on notice of a dangerous condition, it creates legal exposure. What we have here is we've got, we've got the engineer, Tim Lawley. I asked him at the community meeting. I said, "Are you a golfer?" "No." They have designed this whole preliminary subdivision plat that they're submitting to you for approval, I think it's item number two, without even having a golfer analyze it for safety. I mean, you know, and we're not talking about everybody that plays Lakewood courses a professional golfer that hits his tee shot straight down the middle. 90% of golfers, I read something recently, 90% of golfers have a slice, meaning it goes right. Well, if you tee off on number two, you're going right over that fence. If you tee off on number three, you're going right --
If you could...
Wrap it up?
Wrap it up, that'd be great, sir. Thank you.
Let me just jump over to what I think is really a critical point, and that's this. In their application, all the paperwork I've seen, the RSA, the engineers refer to County Road 34. Unless I'm sadly mistaken, that's County Road 44 there. And I think if they had contacted the county engineer and sought approval for access onto the golf course, they would have found out that Battle Roads there is 44. But here's the thing. In your regs, and I'm talking about the City of Fairhope, Alabama subdivision regulations, and I called over to the county engineer's office this afternoon, and there's never been an application from the engineers, from RSA, to the county for access off County Road 44 onto the golf course for this subdivision. And the regulations of this body that I stand before says at page 11, "The application for preliminary plat shall include..." And then you go over to page 17. "In the case of applications for a preliminary plat outside of the city limits, but within the jurisdiction of these regulations, the applicant shall be required to submit evidence in writing that plans for the subdivision shall have been received by the county engineer for his/her review." And then going over to page 15. "All of the foregoing shall apply to rights of way controlled by the county, except that the county engineer's approval shall appear on the plat to be reviewed by the planning commission." And I've got the plat, the only plat I've seen doesn't have that.
We're on the zoning right now, though.
Yeah. But I thought I saw item 2 as being on the agenda for that approval as well. But at the end of the day, ask yourself, who in Fairhope benefits from 10 homes in the middle of the Lakewood golf course? The right thing to do in this case is also the legal thing to do as well, and that's to recommend denial of this application. It goes way too far. Thank you.
Adam, are you ready? You're up next. And since you're speaking for a lot of folks, I'll give you 10 minutes if that...
Oh, well, I don't know if I can do that. Adam Milam, 251 Galaxy Street, Fairhope. And I'm not just an attorney for Battles Road. I've lived in Fairhope since 2002. I've played Lakewood, been a member of Lakewood, and really care about this community, as I know all of y'all do, too. And just following up, just a little bit of a visual on what Carol said. To your bottom left is the tee box going up hole 2. And, I mean, for me, maybe 70% of the time, when you're approaching that green, you can see the green is back behind that golf... That subdivision. Your ball goes in those trees 70% of the time, and you're hitting a shot to approach that green underneath those tree limbs 70% of the time. If this is approved and built, those balls will be going in people's yards, on the street, in the homes, and that's just not good golf course design and maintenance, of which there's many cases talking about liability when there's negligent golf course design. And it's heightened when the fact is that there's an existing golf course and an amendment going on with the subdivision being placed in the middle of a golf course. Also, tee number 3 is on the other side after you do the golf cart path, which Carol was talking about, right next to County Road 44. If you avoid the FedEx and Amazon trucks pulling in, you get to that tee box, and you're hitting it down towards the green. Again, you're slicing it on the other side of those trees. Ms. Marsh did a good job in explaining a lot of the history of this, and that does become important from a legal standpoint, because when courts are looking at, does this application comply with existing law? They look at a lot of factors and flags, and the intent of the people who moved into the community is one of the key factors. The second really important factor is how long has this property been a golf course? And in this case, it's been there since the late 1940s after World War II. There are covenants and restrictions for it, and I would just think, even though it's... I understand the difference between private property rights and zoning interpretation, but there is a criteria that the application comply with existing laws. And I think it would be important to take into account that if this can ever be built despite your approval, because it violates Alabama law, specifically covenants and restrictions, why approve it in the first place? Why force these people to hire me, to pay me money, to go into court to declare this illegal? I think that should still be a consideration that y'all look at. The TR district, this is a confusing zoning ordinance, and y'all tabled it at the last hearing because you wanted to look at it. And there's two things when you're looking at an ordinance, right? There's the spirit of the ordinance. What is it really trying... What does it really mean? And then there's the letter of the words. The Tourism Resort District was basically enacted in 2005 for the colony development, the colony condominiums, the colony pool, and develop those subdivisions around that colony lake. The district itself, when it's talking about the purpose and intent, it was to provide for a large acreage under unified control to be developed as a whole. It was supposed to encourage resort-oriented properties that would attract people to our area, tourists, to provide increased privacy, to help... The TR district is supposed to help promote, preserve, and enhance natural landscape features. It is to create a zoning classification that would help developers who wanted to come into our community and build a really nice, large resort with a hotel, with the marina, with the pool, and to give them the flexibility in order to do that, because that's one thing Fairhope wants to attract, that would otherwise not be possible through conventional zoning I would just submit to you that attempting to carve out 7.23 acres out of an existing resort amenity that's been around since the 1940s and a staple of the Fairhope community in order to put yet another subdivision, specifically 0.3-acre lots, in the middle of these large, nice homes in Lakewood on a golf course, is exactly the opposite of what the TR district's purpose and intent is, and therefore violates the spirit and intent of the TR district. I understand that the language in the ordinance itself doesn't require contiguousness. However, if you look at the current TR designation, which I believe this is the only one in Fairhope right now, every other addition, every other addition has been contiguous. And that's important to look at, because when you're looking at the ordinance, you look at the history of how it's been applied. This is not part of the RSA Colony TR District original plan back in 2005. This is a simple try to carve out so that RSA can pad its financial bottom line so it can show a 10-acre subdivision lot to help its financials look good. It doesn't do anything for our community. It doesn't meet the spirit and intent of the TR district. You know, I laid out some other stuff about, you know, how courts have said, "Listen, you need to look at, you know, the surrounding community. You don't need to just go by the whims of certain privileged few, that you need to look at the comprehensive plan." But I think the way that you bring all that into one simple point is that, as the planning commission, you are an important initial legislative body, and whatever decision y'all make is going to be upheld, maybe likely followed by the city council, and if so, likely upheld by a court, unless we can show that it's somehow completely arbitrary and capricious. Y'all have the power to look at what's best for the general welfare of the community, look at the zoning ordinance, look at the criteria. Does it comply with the law? Look at what the citizens say. And y'all have the power to say, "You know what? This does not comply with what Fairhope wants in its spirit, in its community, and with the ordinance." Y'all have that discretion. You don't have to say, "There's... If there's not a clear violation, we have to approve it." That's not the situation. So I hope you look at all this. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I don't know what y'all reviewed on the TR designation or what y'all think's important, but those are the kind of things that I look at from my standpoint as a community member as well as a lawyer, in looking at this, and what's the real purpose of this TR district. And this just flies in the face of it, and I would hope that y'all would vote to recommend denial.
All right. Scott, do you have anything? We'll go ahead, and I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We've gone through the sheet. And let the developer respond as he sees fit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Hutchinson with Goodwin Mills in K-wood, and I'm here representing the developer, in this case, RSA. Certainly. And what I'd like to do is simply go through the list of people that spoke. I do not have a presentation to make. Is it on? I won't bother you with the presentation, but I'll certainly answer any questions that you have individually after I address a few of the items that were brought up, and I'll be brief with those. Ms. Marsh made some good points. However, we cannot uphold any previous promises made or anything like that. I really don't know where those came from, but there's nothing I can address regarding her comments. Ms. Frost made some good points. However, most of those are really subjective, and I can't address a lot of the points that she brought up as far as impact on adjacent properties, things like that. This parcel was carved out to do just what we're here proposing to do tonight well over 10 years ago, and now we're here doing what we did 10 years ago to... And so it was done well before her house was built or anything like that. So Mr. Sullivan, his comments regarding the marina, if that's still not a marina, I don't know where marina is. I mean, by definition, it is a marina, so I don't want to wade off into that, but I would... I was sitting on my chair and looked up the definition of marina, and it says nothing about gas pumps. So feel free to look that up. But it is indeed a marina, so we're not going to go down that road. The vehicle safety and the cart path crossing the street, I mean, that's no different than any other golf course around here, like Rock Creek or Lake Forest or anything like that.
Excuse me. The developer gave you respect. Let's be quiet, please. I'll have you walked out. Excuse me. He gets the chance to speak. It's his turn. We gave you your chance. We're going to be respectful. This is Fairhope. This isn't West Mobile, all right? Let's be respectful and let him speak, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand the concern, but cart paths cross streets and on golf course communities, and that's just... That's what's being proposed here. It will be gated. I don't see how it's any different safety-wise than crossing a rock creek or anything else. As far as golf balls landing in lots, I mean, I don't know if it's 70% or not, that slice. I just... I really can't speak to that. It's, again, it's carved out. There are golf course professionals that work with RSA that do look at this. This is not something as it was brought up that Tim Lawley came up with. It's certainly not at all. Also, Mr. Sullivan brought up the county's involvement here. The county, if this was to stay in the county and not be rezoned and pulled into Fairhope, we would certainly submit to the county for subdivision, and their name would be on the plat. In this case, if it is rezoned and pulled into the city, there wouldn't be any need for that, and that's the process we're following. We would submit to the county for a turnout permit if this were approved. So we're not ignoring the county or doing anything inappropriate. We're just following the process as we typically do time and time again. And the County Road 34, I do believe it is County Road 34. If you look at the map that's right on the screen, it says County Road 34 on the... That's the county GIS map. Mr. Milam's comments, I really don't have anything that I can address. Most of those are really for the RSA attorneys or maybe the city's attorney to address and discuss on covenants and restrictions and things like that. From a technical standpoint, I can certainly answer any questions that you have, though. That's it.
Are there any questions for the developer while he's here? Anybody? All right. Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll go ahead and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. I think you had a question for our attorney.
Yes, and then I've got several comments I want... I would like to make, too. But I would like, Ken, can you provide some guidance in the research that you have done, and especially as it relates to the city's subdivision, well, not subdivision, but zoning ordinance, especially as TR district and how that might or might not relate to restrictive covenants that may have been in place sometime in the past?
Sure. I think Mr. Milam pretty much acknowledged the lay of the...
He's closer to your microphone, please.
I think the speakers, for the most part, acknowledge the lay of the land in terms of what the law is. Municipal land use regulation and land use regulation by private contracts operate independently of one another, so that if there are existing applicable and enforceable restrictive covenants that apply to this property, that does not prevent this body or the city council from enacting a zoning law that might be inconsistent with those restrictive covenants. The law is fairly clear about that. Likewise, the law is fairly clear that land use regulation in the form of a zoning ordinance or a subdivision approval cannot have the effect of rendering inapplicable or negating the application of private restrictive covenants. Simply, the law doesn't put this body or the city council in the position of being the interpreter and enforcer of private contracts. If this body and the council chooses to grant this zoning change and the restrictive covenants are indeed applicable and have the interpretation being advanced, the remedy for that is in the courts, not here or at the city council.
Okay. Which then would go back to answering Adam Milam's issue about why would... If we had the chance to turn this down, we would turn it down and keep these people from having to go to court, which really doesn't come into play at all.
Well, I think, without focusing on that particular question, the answer to that question's built into what I said. To not act on... To not grant an approval that you might think is appropriate would be... Because there are restrictive covenants, would be assuming that these covenants apply and further assuming that they should be interpreted and applied in the manner being advanced. There might be another viewpoint, and so that's why you wouldn't fail to act, because someone says, "Well, these restrictive covenants apply, and they apply in this particular manner." It's putting you in the position of being the interpreter and enforcer.
Which is not where we need to be.
And the law, it's not your obligation.
Well, we don't have access to those covenants to begin with.
Ma'am?
Like, we haven't... I mean, additionally, we haven't... We don't have access to those covenants. We haven't read them. We can't... We have no means, even if it were appropriate.
Even if I could read them, you know, I'm not qualified.
No, I'm just building on that. Like, we... Yeah, we're not qualified to do so, but we also don't... Haven't seen them.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Turn up.
As to the... If it may, as to the marina...
covenants. We haven't read them. We can't, we have no means, even if it were appropriate.
Even if I could read them, you know, I'm not qualified.
No, I'm just building on that. Like, we, yeah, we're not qualified to do so, but we also don't, haven't seen them.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Turn up.
As to the, if it may, as to the marina point, I didn't want it to go unnoticed. Marina is a defined term in the zoning ordinance, and it simply means a business providing boat storage and services on the water. I don't know whether it's a marina or not factually, but that's the definition of marina in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay. Ken, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I don't really know where to start because there's several of them. In 1991, Baldwin County initiated district zoning. 1991, that's a long time ago. First district that came into zoning in Baldwin County was District 16, which was Montrose. Since 1991, all of unincorporated, unzoned Baldwin County, which was in different districts, had the opportunity to do that. Now, what I would tell all of you people that live in that unzoned district or did live in the unzoned district, where were you? Where were you? Where have you been since 1991? We've got about 16 or 17 districts in Baldwin County that are zoned. And I'll tell you the same thing that I told the folks in Spanish Florida states when I was on the Baldwin County Planning Commission, when they came and they didn't like something that was going to happen in their neighborhood either. Where were y'all when zoning was afforded to you, but you obviously chose not to have it? And it doesn't become an issue until it becomes an issue, when it becomes, it's in your backyard. So I would tell you that, just simply from the standpoint, you've still got an opportunity. There's still a lot of land around the City of Faro that is unzoned. They can either come into the city, or they can stay in the county. There are different zoning regulations affordable in the county than there are in the city. So all I tell you is get up to speed and figure it out, because it's going to get worse. We all know it's going to get worse. It gets worse every single day. And when people come to us and ask us, they don't ask us, they tell us, now, we're willing to come into the city if you zone our property this way. Well, that's really not the way we want to see it happen. City Council, I don't think, wants to see it happen that way. We, as the county planning commi, I mean, city planning commission, don't want to see it happen that way. It's your responsibility, not ours. We can't force zoning in areas that are unzoned in the county. Okay? That's number one. Adam Mylum made the comment, why would we approve something that the restrictive covenants may say that it doesn't, that it can't happen? Very simply, because we don't enforce restrictive covenants. And the reason that we wouldn't approve it just because of that, because City Faro would be in a lawsuit over that. Our objective is to do what's right for the city. If it meets the rules and the regulations of the city, for the most part, and I'm going to qualify that, but for the most part, it meets the rules and the regulations, there's absolutely no reason for us to deny it. If you don't like the rules and the regulations, then you come to the planning commission or the planning department or the city council, and you have those rules and regulations changed. But they are the rules and regulations. They're what everybody up here has to abide by, is what you have to abide by in anyone else that comes to us. If you don't like them, then let's change them. But if it meets the rules and the regulations, our responsibility to a developer and to you as public is to approve them. And the reverse of that is also true. Let's see. And I've already talked about it. I'll make a comment about this application in just a minute, but I need, but we all need to understand just exactly how the planning commission can participate in the game. But the responsibility is your responsibility. So that's pretty much that. Now, in terms of one other comment, I'll make that when we get down to making a motion unless we're already there. Or anybody else has a comment?
Well, I'd just like to say on this, you know, we are looking at, right now, a zoning, and this is a zoning out of the city limits. And I agree with everything that Art said. You know, the problem with the zoning out of the city limits is normally if you deny a zoning like this, and then you look at what's the alternative for the developer, and the developer could just come back unzoned with a application that simply has to meet the subdivision ordinances, which in this case, when you've got 10 lots on seven and a half acres, whether it's under a TR District, whether it's under a R1 under the city, whether it's under a county zoning or a PUD under the city, for the most part, you can work a deal and get 10 lots on seven acres. You know, we have our private property rights. And generally, I'd be very vexed on something like this, because even though I wouldn't care for it, it's like, what's the alternative? Since there's no zoning out there stating what has to be done, it would just come in under either city or Fairhope subdivision regulations. However, in this case, I am one of the 70%. My dad hooks, I slice. And I tell you, I really like everything RSA has done, Scott, you know, to date. You know, I see Carol at the workout room about twice a week, and, you know, with four kids in college, I'm not on the golf course quite as much right now as I need to be. I'm trying to peddle insurance a little bit more, but plan to be on the golf course a little bit more in about three years. But I think, you know, what RSA has done so far has been great. I think there's definitely a benefit to the city and the construction, the construction boom, the people shopping downtown, the hotel. I normally, if I'm going to, you know, try to work with somebody, it's going to be RSA because of how important the Grand Hotel is to all of us, Thomas Hospital, because how important the hospital is to all of us. But in this case, I've just got to say, if this property were twice as wide and had twice as many houses, with the road going down the middle, I would probably be more, probably like it better. But I just cannot get my hands around a subdivision that has a golf course on both sides of it. I mean, it's one thing to understand on one side of your house, you're going to have golf balls hitting it, but then you can put your kid's basketball goal in the backyard by the garage. When you're getting in and out of your car, loading your garage, you're not worried about getting hit by a golf ball. You've got the green space here, and how usable this green, the common area is, I mean, that would be right about where my slice would go, you know, most of the time. And, you know, that common area would, in essence, really just remain a part of the golf course. And I just, to me, the safety aspect of not having a refuge for people, you know, and something like RSA, it's just 10 lots. I mean, surely we can find somewhere else to put 10 lots that, you know, would be safe for people. But, and again, nothing against RSA, what they've done to date, I have been very, very, very supportive of. As far as this tourist district, I mean, it's created, I think, one of the nicest developments, and the sales show that. I mean, the houses are selling in most of the areas as fast as they're being built. And I think it's overall a great tourist subdivision, and I think what they're doing is fantastic. But this one, to me, is just a little bit too much, because I just can't get my hands around a double-sided, you know, lot and kind of where's the refuge of people? Is somebody going to trip on a golf ball, carrying bags, going into their house if they're older? If they're younger, they're going to be hit by golf balls playing basketball? When you're pulling out, you're going straight against the tee with your windshield? That, it's just, to me, it's just a little much. But other than that, I like the design and everything that RSA is doing so much and hate to, you know, hate to be a wet blanket, but to me, this one's just a little bit too far, is all I can say.
Can I put my other hat on now?
Certainly.
All right. I want to be sure, Scott, we talked about the environmental aspects of it, which is near and, certainly near and dear to me. The environmental aspects of Lakewood, and I can only say that I played at Lakewood when I was about four and five years old. We used to terrorize that place even back then. But I played golf there when I was six and seven years old, too. The one thing that has always been so unbelievable about Lakewood, and it has become even more so today, is the environmental quality of that place. Between the, I don't know, I guess they asked the big alligators to leave, because there's not that many big alligators there anymore, but what took his place were the bald eagles. And the eagles require a substantial amount of wetland area. Certainly, there's one on, one big eagle on, Big Eagle Nest on Dogwood, and I'm guessing there are others, because I see multiple eagles on the bay now, early in the morning, 6:30 to 7 o'clock, right near there. Part of the tourist resort district talks about the encouragement and development, develop connections between environmental quality and economic vitality, and I think it's all part of it. You can go in the Lakewood, and it's not my property to have anything to say about this, but if you, if you learn the aesthetic and environmental quality of it, who the devil wants to go play there? I don't. I don't want to go there. I don't want anything to do with it. Also, there's another bullet point, says promote the preservation and enhancement of existing natural landscape features and their scenic qualities. To me, that's as much about Lakewood as anything that I've ever read. There are several other items in the TR District that talk about the amenities, you know, in terms of the aesthetics and one thing and another. And with that said, the one thing, whether it meets the actual rules and the regulations or not, there's one caveat that overrides it all. Safe, the safety, the welfare of the public. The health, safety, and welfare of the public. And in my opinion, not just because of the golf cart, but because, as Lee mentioned, proximity of those houses and where they are, it detracts significantly from the aesthetic quality. It's going to have an impact on the environmental quality of Lakewood. And in terms of putting people at risk, and I'm not talking about myself getting run over in a golf cart, I'm thinking about the FedEx driver, too, that's going to run over me, or the garbage truck. But it's the safe, health, safety, and welfare of the public. That's number one to me, and I don't think this comes close to protecting not just the golfers, but the people that live there or the people that are visiting there. So, right there. Don't, please, don't clap. That's not part of it. That's just my opinion.
Anybody else have anything to say? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah. I have something to say also. I live right up the street from you guys on Twin Beach Road, and I feel your pain. I was approached a week ago by an individual, and as we were walking, my husband and I, to see this area, and I was explaining to him, and like they were saying, as you guys spoke before me, the safety part of it, I don't really agree with. Just the whole, if you could change some aspect of it, I definitely would. The trees, I was asking about the trees, and I feel bad for you guys with the trees, because that is what makes that particular area the most beautiful. And it's, it is sad that we don't have something to protect our trees more, to enforce it more, but the area, what you guys are doing to build, it is beautiful, like you guys said, but this is forced. Some of the projects are just being kind of forced, and I feel like this is just a forced, a forced effort, and the safety of the people is the biggest concern. And at some point, we have to look at the ordinance that, things that were written in the past compared to where we are, the growth that is happening, and we're kind of acting, I feel like, a little, a little too fast and making decisions that just aren't suitable in us as a council. We need to kind of slow this down a little bit and look at this, because it's great, but just not in this, this isn't the right location for me.
And I appreciate everybody being here as well. I do know that we have regulations and we have ordinances that we have to weigh in terms of what's submitted, and if they meet those regulations and ordinances, if we elect not to approve what's requested of the property owner, then in the past, we have been sued for that. And I don't know that we've won any case that we've been sued for, where we've neglected to approve something because we didn't like it. And we have gone, I can go back through my term on the planning commission, and I can't tell you that I've liked anything that we've approved, but we've approved it because it met the requirements that are in the regulations that we're here to look at and make judgments on. You know, I have a house that borders what would be the Reno Road District that we're talking about doing, and I could have bought the property that's directly behind my house and kept people from putting a parking lot on that if I had the resources to do that. And in retrospect, maybe that's what I should have done. The only way I know to keep people from developing a piece of property the way they want it to develop is for you to own it. And I'm not suggesting you go talk to RSA about buying the property, but I think everybody that owns property has a right to do with it, what they have available to them in terms of what we have to look at and judge it by. And I'm sorry, I just, I just think that there's, if it meets the requirements, I think it's our duty to allow that person to do that with their property. And I agree with what Art says, and Clarice, maybe we need to reevaluate these ordinances, and maybe we should have done that in 1991. When was that, Art?
1991.
But we haven't done that. And until we get serious about doing that, I don't see that we can put ourselves at an exposure, or the city at an exposure, for denying something that meets all the requirements that we ask of people. Well, and nobody says any of them ever meet it. I mean, I hear the same thing from, we've had one development that has come to this commission that people got up and said, please approve that development, one of them. And I can't tell you how many we've had to approve because it meets the requirements.
This is not a subdivision, this is a zoning.
I have a clarifying question, well, after Robert.
Go ahead, Robert.
This is just to staff, because this is what's giving me heartburn about this. If we don't approve this zoning, is it, in the staff comments, it was indicating that under county, you know, they'll be allowed to have more lots and potentially have more trees cut down. So I wanted to clarify that, and then I did have some more comments and questions after that.
Well, that would still come back to us as a subdivision, and I would submit that I think, you know, personally, maybe I'm wrong, but I believe that we do and would have the ability, and furthermore, I'd submit to you that it's our job, if we think that a subdivision would violate the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens, I think it's our job that we would deny it.
Okay. Then, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to first applaud everybody here and everybody else that sit correspondence, because collectively, I've received more on this issue of 10 lots than I have every other issue combined in three and a half years of public service, both as a 10 months of commission, as well as three and a half years as council. So I don't know if the commission gets everything that's sent to the council as well, but good job to the public. Also, I'd like to reiterate what Art has mentioned, and to me, maybe the city needs to do a public service campaign to make the citizens aware of consequences of being in unzoned areas. That's our challenge every time. And when we annex these subdivisions, at the last city council meeting, we had a 76-acre PUD that came in. Did I like it? No. What's the consequence? They go back to the county and they get approval to build even more dense than what's going to be allowed coming into the city, and we get half the sales tax revenue. So there's no benefit to the city if we let it get away. So when I look at this TR District, I think these 10 lots is an abuse of what the TR District was intended to do, and to me, I don't see any benefit for the city of bringing it in. Also, the challenge, this is just your first step, so I encourage you to come back to the council meeting. I'll see you then.
You know, there's one other, there's one other point that, correct me, Ken, if I'm wrong, but I think I remember reading in the TR District, this is actually not a part of the TR District. This is, they're asking to come in to the TR District with this seven-point, however many acres. There is the opportunity, based on what I have read in the TR District ordinance, that gives us the opportunity, not necessarily, we could require additional, we could require additional programs out of the developer in this. For example, we could require a PUD, a freestanding PUD. We may deny even bringing it in to the, we don't have to bring it into the TR District. As I read the ordinance, am I correct in that?
Yes, there are provisions that give the city more flexibility in requiring other things of the developer that it received in the- things of the developer that it received in the initial approval of the Tourism and Resort District. If additional property comes in, yes.
Yes, so, so, so that's, that's one component of it, although it doesn't materially change my attitude about this little piece of property. But I would mention to you that if they do, which I would not, I would not doubt that they won't, go back to the county and ask for some other type of, of relief from the county, and just stay on top of it, be, uh, be aware, because it'll, it'll be in Robertsdale, and it won't be very long down the line.
Any more comments?
I had a couple of comments. I was, I'm really, I guess to echo what Robert said, I, I'm really encouraged to see so many people getting involved and so many comments and concerns about the destruction of these old trees. The flip side of that is, this is seven acres, and we see stuff every day that has a much greater number of trees being cut down. So, I, I would hope that all of you get involved when it's not in your backyard and stay involved. And I think as development pressure increases in Fairhope, this is going to be a much bigger, bigger issue. And we see cities all over the country that are actually assessing their, their tree canopy and saying, "What is, what is our tree canopy now? Is it at 10%? Is it 20%? Is it like, you know, bear hope in Birmingham, 60 or 70%? What should it be and where should it remain?" And they're setting goals, and they're finding, when, when you're talking about economic vitality and environmental vitality, which is, you know, written into this district, you know, those two things are connected, and there's very real, there's very real benefits in the increase in property values from 4 to 10% with mature tree cover. There's real reductions in energy costs and in cooling demand. You know, the Atlanta region did a study about their tree cover, and it projects $2.8 million a year in savings with them increasing their tree cover, and in stormwater. And I, I won't grandstand that much further, but I, I love the enthusiasm over this small piece, and I hope that we can maintain that and, and do more over the, you know, citywide to have a bigger impact.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I address the commission very, very briefly for the benefit of the public that's with us here tonight? And for, for our citizens in attendance tonight, thank you again for coming. Addressing something that Commissioner Dias mentioned, citizens, you're welcome to go to the City of Fairhope website. We have an online map viewer that anyone with a computer with internet, internet access can, can, can use. And so, you access that by going to the city's website and hovering over departments, or clicking on departments. And then in the center, in the center of the page, you will have an area that is in, that is marked with Planning and Development Services. When you open that up, it opens the Planning and Zoning Department page, it'll have all the staff members. But what I would direct citizens to is, on the left side of the screen, there's an area you can hover over called Map Viewer. You click on the Map Viewer, it will open a screen where you click on the City of Fairhope logo. It opens the Map Viewer, it makes you click a disclaimer, which basically says that what you're looking at, though highly accurate information, is not a survey. Once you open that, you have an online GIS map viewer that is completely free and, and it works very well. If the areas you look at, and it works best with a, it works best on a desktop computer where you have a traditional mouse with scroll wheel, but it works, it works fine on tablets. If you see an area in and around Fairhope that has a plain white background, it is unzoned. It means it's unzoned, and it's not in the city limits. The areas that are color-coded, whether it be a bright yellow, a dark brown, or a light brown, or a beige, the various colors, those are the color coding that indicates what its zoning district is, if it's in the city. If it's in the city, it's zoned. You can actually zoom in on a particular piece of property, and you have to zoom in very tight sometimes, but the name of that zoning district will appear as you zoom in closer, and then you can go to the zoning ordinance and look up that district and know what it's zoned and what that means. And so, I did not want to miss this opportunity to share that information with more citizens to make them aware that if you don't know if you're in the city limits, if you don't know if you're zoned, because we have citizens that may be outside the city limits but receive all city services, with the exception of probably garbage collection, but they may very well have water, sewer, gas, and electric, depending upon their proximity to other city properties. So, I wanted to take a moment to advise citizens about that and speak it into the record where someone could watch the recording and hear the instructions for finding it. So, Commissioners, thank you for, for that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Beaufort. I'll let you have something to say.
I wanted to know if I could go ahead and make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion to deny Agenda Item A, ZC 19.16.
Did you make a recommendation to, to the city council?
To the city council to deny, yes.
Or deny?
I've got a motion to recommend to city council that ZC 19.16, Watershed West rezoning be denied by the city council. Do I have a second?
Do you want to state your reasoning?
Health and safety and wellness of our citizens of Fairhope.
Second. All right, I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Ken, do you have?
I'd like a subdivision denial where this body would have final approval for making a recommendation to the city council. You're not required to give a detailed recitation of the reasons for that denial.
Thank you, Ken. All right, any more further discussion? If not, all in favor to make a recommendation to deny, say aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay. I'm sorry, y'all.
All right, so, um, the recommendation is seven to one to the city council to deny. All right, the next item on the agenda.
I'm going to take a break.
Hey, let's take a five-minute break. Let me clear out. All right, I have just been told that the Watershed West preliminary plat, the developer, has requested to table that for the time being until after the city acts upon the zoning. So, um, if you're here for Watershed West, we are done with that for the evening. So, Carol, you go into the workout room now, so, anyway. The next, yeah, the next item on the agenda is request...
See you next month.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a two-lot minor subdivision for Glenn and Sally Boom. The pro, the property is located on the southwest corner of Adams and Second Street.
Okay, good evening. I just want to introduce myself again. I am Samara Wiley, new city planner with City of Fairhope.
Excuse me, a little louder, Samara, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Today, we'll be looking at a two-lot minor subdivision, Wildwood of Montrose, case number SD 1942. A brief summary of the request, it is a public hearing to consider the request of Glenn and Sally Boom for a two-lot minor subdivision. The property is located at the southwest corner of Second Street and Adams Street. The subject property is approximately 1.18 acres, and the applicant desires to divide the property into two residential lots. Here is the, the subject property. It is in the county. County zoning is RSF 2, Planning District 16. Just to kind of give you an idea of where it is located, here at the corner of Adams and Second Street. Here is the site plan, preliminary site plan that was submitted. It is showing that there is an existing resident on site. It is, again, two lots. The front lot is going to be approximately 34,110 square feet, and the second lot is 17,298 square feet. Just some comments. Again, it is located in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. It is, we did review it under the Fairhope subdivision regulations as a minor subdivision. Also, the preliminary plat does not require sidewalks, and the applicant is requesting a waiver of those sidewalks. Secondly, the subdivision, it did not include any infrastructure, any improvements, therefore, no tree protection plan, landscape plan, or anything of that nature is applicable. And lastly, there was no traffic study that was triggered, triggered. Water services will be provided by Daphne Utilities and powered by Riviera Utilities.
Not to interrupt, but just the plat that is in your packets is incorrect. So, if you'll, she, she has a copy of the plat that she can put up on the screen to answer any questions.
They had y'all, they had y'all fooled, didn't they?
That doesn't take much.
Not, not sure how that one got printed off as opposed to the, to the original, but just to clarify that, the original in the file is good, what she has on the screen is good. The copy that got attached to the packets that was distributed out is inaccurate.
And I will go back to that in just a moment. Just to continue, again, the applicant has requested two waivers. The first is for the requirement for sidewalks. The applicant provided a letter stating that the, they're only, the only existing sidewalks in the immediate vicinity are along Main Street, and therefore, there will be a note placed on the plat stating that sidewalks would be constructed at the time of home construction. The second waiver request is for fire hydrants. The subdivision regulations require that fire hydrants must be installed along each street at a maximum interval of 450 feet. Currently, there are no fire hydrants within this radius, and the applicant is requesting a wa, a waiver from this requirement. We review our waivers on a criteria, and I will read them as follows. If there is an extraordinary hardship, they may result in strict compliance with the regulations due to unusual topography or physical conditions. The condition is beyond the control of the subdivider. The requested waiver will not have the effect of nullifying the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan. The waiver is a minimum deviation from the required standard necessary to relieve the hardship. The waiver shall not have an adverse effect on adjacent landowners or future landowners or the public. And lastly, the waiver is necessary so that substantial justice is done. Staff's recommendation is tabling with the applicant's consent to allow the applicant to submit the following. Submission of plans and profiles of a fire hydrant within 450 feet of the subject property and resubmission of the application to reflect a major subdivision containing a preliminary plat approval request in lieu of the concurrent preliminary and final plat approval. Secondly, revision of the preliminary plat to reflect a 15-foot drainage and utilities easement along the western perimeter of Lot 1. And lastly, the acceptance of the waiver request to allow sidewalk installation at the time of new construction with this requirement to be reflected on the preliminary, on the preliminary plat. Staff would also like to verbalize that if the applicant does not provide consent for tabling the case, that we would request to deny the case due to noncompliance with Article 6, Section, Section G.
This is the fire hydrant?
Yes.
Samara, would you put the, the plat back up on there for us?
Yes, sir, I can.
There you go.
Okay, and staff is prepared to answer any questions, and the applicant, Mr. Seth Moore is present.
Where would the side, where would the sidewalk, if the sidewalks were built, where would they be built? On Adams Street?
You'd have to be Second.
Or Second Street?
Or both.
Or both?
The sidewalk requirement, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, would be required on both streets.
Technically, if we were following it to the letter, yeah, it would have to, it'd have to go around the, that would be the north side of Lot, of proposed Lot 1, and then the east side of proposed Lot 1 and proposed Lot 2. And Commissioners, interjecting here for just a second, the verbalizing the denial, that's, that's on me, Commissioners, and I appreciate Samara's hard work on this, but that was something we discovered very late in the process, so we want to, for the safety conscience, for the safety issue, and we deal with this from time to time on fire hydrants and the fire hydrant requirement of the subdivision regulations. So, that was a late catch, so that's, that was on me, so, uh, so just wanted to clarify that.
Let me, let me ask you something. Being intricately familiar with Montrose, when you've got, you've got bigger lots in, in, in Montrose, and granted, there's some that have already been done this way, but when it comes to si, when it comes to sidewalks, to, I mean, is there something, is there something else that we could put on a, maybe not necessarily on a plat, or maybe it's on the plat, that would, would, at the time of whatever, I mean, but, uh, that sidewalks would be built at a later time? I know it says when, when construction, but what if, if you look at your first page right here, what if all these lots on Adams Street are the same size, and nobody ever builds another site? What's the purpose? I don't understa, I don't understand what the purpose would be, and why would we force a landowner to go to that expense with a sidewalk out in the middle of Timbuktu? I mean, it, maybe down the road, if, if, if the city or the county or, you know, I mean, there's so much city and county property intermingled in Montrose, it's silly, so in the event that eventually you got sidewalks, let's say, on Adams Street, maybe then you would have, you know, this, this landowner, whoever owns Lot 1, would be required to participate in the construction of, but not, not right now. I mean, it just doesn't make, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I, uh, address that? And, and that's a fantastic question, I'm glad Commissioner Dias asked that. And if the Commissioners will recall, and we, we see this from time to time, and we do see this from time to time, and I think the most recent example, we had a subdivision that was so far away from the city, but still within the planning jurisdiction, that it was outside our permit jurisdiction, outside our police jurisdiction. And my recollection is, is that since it was really unknown and really couldn't be projected when a sidewalk would actually be physically constructed in the field, I think the way we addressed that, the way the commission addressed that, it was accepted a condition of approval that a pedestrian easement was reflected on the plat.
We've done easements quite a few times in cases, you know, Montrose is unique because it's fairly built out. You know, some of the places that make me more uncomfortable are like when you get out County Road 32, or out County Road 48 out near Walmart, where you think you're out in the middle of the country, and lo and behold, you know, you're about five years younger than my dad, and my dad tells me about, you know, hunting where Bel Air Mall used to be, going, you know, squirrel hunting where Bel Air Mall is, and, you know, that's not anything that you consider rural now, so, you know, you just don't know how things are going to change and how fast they can change. I mean, you get some of these national developers, and they come in, you know, we ever get one of those, they do a 2,000-lot subdivision in two years. I mean, it's just crazy how fast things can change when you, you know.
Well, but, but what this stipulates...
But I think if we did a, a right of, you know, if we just did an easement here, because also, there's another issue in Montrose, that you don't want to necessarily always require sidewalks, because Montrose doesn't have a lot of traffic in that area, and it has so many heritage trees, that if you call, require sidewalks, sometimes you damage some of those heritage tree roots and, and so forth, and so it's sort of a give and take.
Well, the thing on, the thing on the, on the recommendation is that the sidewalks
will be built when these are developed, and, and there just needs to be, that just needs to be changed.
But if, if the recommendation is just to table, should we just ask the applicant if they are, agree with that and go ahead and table it?
Seth, would you like to table it?
Well, I'd like to kind of answer some of the questions first.
All right, well, let's go ahead, I'll open the public hearing at this time then. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant.
Yes. To answer one of your questions, the lot size is 20,000 square feet, number one. Number two, on Lot 1, the reason why we stayed with a 10-foot drainage and utility easement, if you did a 15, you would be going through part of the house. The house is right at 10 feet from the property line on the west side on Lot 1. We did change it on Lot 2 to a 15-foot on the west side and south side. We would be glad to add, you know, on that, where it has that 10-foot drainage and utility easement along Second and Adams, to put that as a pedestrian easement. We'll be glad to... along Second and Adams, to put that as a pedestrian easement. We'll be glad to add that language to it. The other waiver as to the fire hydrant, if you look back at the overview where it shows Main Street, if you turn back to that one, yes, that one. The closest fire hydrant existing and/or largest main is on Main Street and Adams. And if you were to put a water line along Adams Street, there are about four large oak trees that you would disturb the roots and probably kill them, because you'd be cutting through all of the north side of those oak trees, and there's some five-foot diameter oak trees in that area. Again, I know the city of Daphne, the reason why that main water line was put in many years ago was to have potable water. It was not for fire protection, because most of the people there had iron in their water, and back in the sixties, the only reason why I know it is because I lived on the bay, parents, we had the orange water. Excuse me, and it turned everything an orange color, and so they were well pleased.
That where your shirt came from?
Exactly. Came from Auburn, no. But, and that was the other reason for requesting a variance on the fire hydrant with that as well.
What's the answer to that fire hydrant issue in Montrose then?
Well, again, they haven't, the city of Daphne has not put in any fire hydrants east of Main Street. On, if you look at Chapman, you look at Adams, you look at Sibley, you look at Gable, they all have water lines, but they're all small three-inch or less water lines. Now, when we did Pleiades off of Taylor, because it was a major subdivision, we did put in a new main, had to bore the road under Main Street, and then put in a fire hydrant, actually, two fire hydrants on that subdivision, and it was a major subdivision.
You know, I gotta say, I get uncomfortable subdividing something without a fire hydrant there. And I understand that this is all, you know, a money thing, and if I owned that lot, I would want to subdivide it and have two lots worth more money, but to waive a fire hydrant and a safety issue like that makes me very uncomfortable. And could you put a fire hydrant there? Certainly. Could you put it without hurting the trees? Yeah, you could underground bore it and put it in there. Now, by the time you underground board it and put it in there, you'd spend more money than the lot's worth, so I understand the dilemma, but I just feel uncomfortable approving a subdivision without a fire hydrant, even though it's one additional lot. I mean, if we make a waiver for that, I mean, why don't we just throw our whole books in the garbage? Because, I mean, that's a safety, you know, a life safety issue. I mean, I'm an insurance agent, so I have a different perspective of people. I file three and a half million dollars worth of claims a year, so, you know, I see the ugly. I don't, I see the bad and the ugly. I don't see the good as much, you know? So, I, you know, I'm a believer in fire hydrants. I don't know how the rest of the Commission feels or the staff feels, but, you know, I'm very uncomfortable approving a, you know, a subdivision without, you know, a fire hydrant, you know, within the certain amount of footage that's required.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I think one of the bits of trepidation we have at the staff level is that to provide fire protection without additional fire hydrants regardless of their placement, to access proposed Lot Two would mean connecting to one of the existing fire hydrants on the west side of Main Street and then laying approximately one thousand feet of hose to either way. The hose lay would have to run to the east and then turn on Second Street, and then run another three to four hundred feet to access the proposed Lot Two, and that's, there's two hydrants from which to choose, but either way, a thousand-foot hose lay, and I am certainly not qualified for fire protection in that sense, but I think that the four hundred and fifty-foot reason contemplates that, or the four hundred and fifty-foot requirement in the subdivision regulations contemplates the distances at which firefighters can lay hose and fight fires.
Well, the ISO, you know, insurance service offices.
Absolutely.
To get the right, you know, deal, they require within five hundred feet.
Correct, correct.
Test that if you want to get the protection class from the city, you have to have a fire hydrant from five hundred feet.
And the more homes within our area that do not meet that affects the overall score of the city.
And Commissioners, of course, like we talked about on our previous case, it goes back to health, safety, and welfare. And so therefore, when you have a development, when you have a subdivision, it triggers all of these types of reviews, even if it's a minor subdivision.
Do you have a question? Later on the agenda, mentions talking about the family subdivision. What if we had the family subdivision in place currently, and they wanted to do a family subdivision? Would these same requirements be called upon as far as the fire protection and sidewalk?
That's a great question, Councilman, and the answer in brief, as we're sitting here right now on this case, is that what I'll describe when we get to that point about family subdivisions, is that likely what we will have is that to have a family subdivision, it must not require basically any review at all. So, everything must be in place, utilities, fire protection, fronting upon a pay-public and maintained road. It has to check all those boxes basically with no review. So, anything that would involve any type of infrastructure installation would go through the normal subdivision procedures.
So, the answer to that is yes, it would have to have.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, speaking with my clients, I believe they would like to table it, to maybe get better clarification and to come up with a remedy.
Okay. Thank you, Seth. We'll go ahead. Do I have a motion to table this until further notice? So, do I have a second?
Second.
Under further discussion, do we need a motion?
Commissioners, do we need to specify to table to a future meeting?
I think that's understood. Do we need a motion for that, or?
We do need a motion to table.
Okay.
To make the record clear, the applicant's consenting to tabling this for greater than a period of thirty days.
Okay.
In the event that it takes them more than thirty days to. Yes, sir. So, just wanted to make certain we had that clear. Thank you, sir.
That's in the motion. A second? All right. Any further?
Me? Either one.
No, I got it backwards. Okay. All in favor to table say, all in favor to table do the applicant's request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, wait just a sec. Seth, let me ask you something. Clarification in. Where was the ten-foot, the ten-foot feet that you said the house sat ten feet from the property line? Was that on the east property line toward Main Street?
The west.
I mean, the west property line toward Main Street, all the way down the existing lot?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it. Okay, thank you. Check my.
My point clear, Pond?
Yes, sir. It's on that side.
Okay, I got it. I got it.
And then, like I said on.
Thank you.
It changed it.
Yeah, I got it.
It would just, as in another subdivision, it would cause a conflict if you.
Right. I'm with you. Good. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is S.D. nineteen forty-three, final plat approval for the Tracery.
Good evening. So, this is a public hearing to consider the request of Dewberry Engineers on behalf of sixty-eight V, Tracery Two Thousand and Nineteen, the owner and applicant for a final plat approval of Tracery, which is a forty-three-lot major subdivision located a quarter mile north of Gayford Avenue on the west side of Lawrence Road. Subject property is zoned R-two, medium-density single-family residential, is thirty-one point nine acres. The smallest lot in the subdivision is a little over eleven thousand square feet, with the largest being over twenty-three square feet, and an average lot size of approximately thirteen thousand square feet. It's accessed from Lawrence Road. The preliminary plat was heard approved at the February fourth, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting. On your screen is the zoning map on your left and the aerial on your right. The site looks considerably different now than the aerial does. A few comments. As I said, it's forty-three new single-family residential lots with the new roads and infrastructure. Subdivision has been built in accordance and with the design and engineered plans of the approved preliminary plat in February two thousand and nineteen. Punch list of items that needed attention was set out. The remaining items are as follows, and as a condition of approval, must be completed to the satisfaction of Ken Burmeister, her Development Services Manager. Majority of the items have been completed. The following list, as you see, is primarily some site stabilization, waiting for the grass to grow, is lots fifteen through seventeen, needed vegetation established to ninety percent. They had been scraped for part of the development. I'm not sure if they needed topsoil or what it was, but those were scraped bare and currently are still bare. I think they may have thrown out some seed, but that will need to be established to ninety percent. There were some stockpiles of soil that needed to be stabilized or removed. I believe two out of the three piles have been used or moved. Last visit I had out there in the last week, one pile was still there.
It's still there today.
Still the other day, and some action was still taken on that, so that would need to be stabilized or removed. There was some stabilization around some electrical boxes and along the right-of-way and some of the sidewalks that needed the ninety percent vegetation as well. And then a note on the plat stating that the ten-foot buffer strip that they are showing along Lawrence Road just needs to have a note reflecting that it's reserved for the planting of trees and shrubs. That was a conditional, condition of the approval of the preliminary plat. All the other conditions for that approval were met. So, staff recommends approval of S.D. nineteen forty-three Tracery with the following conditions, that the remaining items referenced above in the comment section are corrected to the satisfaction of Ken Burmeister or the Development Services Manager, and two, that the warranty period of the sanitary sewer lift station shall not commence until the start initial, the initial startup of the lift station and upon approval of water and sewer department, which is a pretty common condition when we're looking at these subdivisions. So, that warranty period is not, does not start in a sitting there with a timer running before any houses are actually built and that lift station is being used. Staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Stephen Humphrey is here on behalf of Dewberry and can answer any questions on behalf of the engineer or the applicant.
Any questions for our staff? In that case, I'll go ahead and open the, thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Seeing nobody left from the public, I will close the public hearing.
What about Mr. Dewberry?
Well, he's.
I'm never gonna hear that.
Representative, but. Anyway.
Hey, let me tell you something. Whenever I see him out on the street, he doesn't ever hear the end of it either.
I've got a question. That entire eastern side, like, the entrance has zero landscaping at all. Is that what's contemplated in note on plat stating the ten-foot buffer strip along Lawrence Road is reserved for plantings? I mean, there's not a tree, a shrub, anything other than the, they're still putting the veneer on the posts at the entrance out there, but when I went out today, Rylands was doing some underground utility work, and there's that big pile of dirt, and there was the no landscaping out of the entrance at all. And I didn't know if that, if that meets our landscape requirements, then we need to change them pretty quick. You know, that whole area is denuded until you get down to the vines and the privet and the popcorn trees, you know, down further to the north along the, that buffer, you know, that part's just, you know, is left wild, but the entrance has nothing there at all.
Look, Chairman, if I may, the landscape plan does call for some trees and vegetation to be around the entrance, which would be included in bond, to have all the street trees, the shirty barn that they submit. So, they might not be in place now, but similar to the sidewalks.
Why don't we just do a preliminary and a final plat at the same time if everything's in the bond? I mean, why does it even come to us? I mean, if we're gonna allow the big pile of dirt and if we're gonna prove something without the landscaping and all, I mean, why just?
Part of the things that weren't on the list was that the core samples from the road have been tested and come back positive, that the stormwater and sewer videos have come back, that all the pipes have been properly fitted, that there's no debris, there's no leaks, that the detention pond has been designed and is functioning properly as it was engineered, that everything's not vegetated to ninety percent, but that is on its way.
So, what is the enforcement mechanism? If we have a conditional approval and there's a long list of this stuff, it doesn't, I don't understand the timeline of that conditional approval.
We don't sign the plat.
They don't get a plat signed.
We don't sign the plat.
As with every conditional approval, until those conditions are met, that plat is not signed and potentially could expire.
And what timeline?
It's sixty days.
Okay. So, we're giving them two months to finish this stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
But we don't get to look at it?
And just to clarify, you know, landscaping's a kind of a tough thing, because it's not a hard infrastructure. It's kind of a soft infrastructure, and of course, the street trees are planted at a spacing required by our ordinance along the front of homes. Also, when the homes are built, the sidewalks are built and you have the planting strip. So, there's a logic that the street tree probably, if they planted them all today, would not make it through the home construction, because we know that that's kind of a difficult process. So, it's not unusual that their whole landscape package is bonded. That means that they have put a fiduciary insurance policy on that. Then what happens in two years, because that's the length of the bond that we'll accept, then we'll go and look. If forty percent of the houses are there and forty percent of the street trees are there and the entrance landscaping is planted, then they reduce that bond by the work that's already been completed and accept it and may renew it again, because generally, we have developments setting, you know, we'll carry a bond on until the last house is built. And that's not unusual, and we really want the landscaping to survive, and we realize that it's best planted at the appropriate time of construction phase that's going on that part of it. Now, I will generally tell you on the entrance landscaping, as soon as they're getting ready to start marketing something there, they do that work at that time. They want it to have the best appealing look on the entrance, and that's usually never a big problem, but we will actually, we'll chase street trees for the next, you know, and now if it builds out in a year, then they'll come back and say, all the trees are here. We want to get our bond back, and we'll check that off, but that's not an unusual thing. That is pretty common, so.
I think it was mostly the Lawrence Road that I noticed, but wasn't so much the interior of the development as the exterior.
Yeah. And let me ask you this. On this subdivision, they'll be required to have all the sidewalks built in two years regardless of whether or not the houses are completed, or is this gonna be another one of those that if the economy goes into the crapper, that we're gonna have a section of this sidewalk for eighteen years, like in the case of Quell Creek, thirty years?
Well, if the bond, if the bond, as Mr. Johnson explained, if the bond nears its completion, then we require them to extend the bond, or essentially.
I'm not talking about the bond. I'm talking about, didn't we change the requirement? We've changed it back and forth a few times to the point I forget where it is now.
No, sir. We never made a definitive change to that requirement. We debated it. We actually had a special work session about eighteen months ago where we discussed that, but as Richard said, this is challenging, and we've debated internally, should we just, to heck with it, make them install every single sidewalk before they get a final plat, but realistically, in the way development works, probably we have the best system right now, is where they do it incrementally, bond the amount that's outstanding. But we did not make a, we did not make a definitive change to the subdivision regulations to require a full buildout of all sidewalks and street trees.
Within a two-year period, no. I mean, and, you know, right now, the market's such a way, you know, there's a good chance there'll be forty-three homes in this neighborhood in two years from now. I mean, but there's also a good chance that there may be three homes in the neighborhood two years from now. I mean, I'm not ever gonna predict the economy again, so.
The market's good now, but that still doesn't explain why Quell Creek, you know, has thirty sections of sidewalk missing, or Spring Lake has a dozen sections of sidewalk missing after, I mean, I think we ought to, I really think we need to make a change and say, within two years, they build every sidewalk. If the houses aren't built and if the economy's great, then more power to them if not. I mean, you know, we see these areas where, you know, kids are riding sidewalks, going from, you know, riding their bikes on the sidewalk, going from the sidewalk to the street to the sidewalk, and that's acceptable for a year or two, but do we want that from, I mean, when was Quell Creek built? I mean, that goes back to the nineties, doesn't it? I mean, that's thirty years.
And Commissioners, I cannot, you know, as we sit here tonight, recall the previous versions of the subdivision regulations and what required at the time.
We've had, we've had three versions. We've had, build all the sidewalks before you start, which the national. We've had, build all the sidewalks before you start, which the national developers weren't bothered by, but some of the local guys, you know, bitched and moaned about that. We had a requirement, like we do now, that you just, the sidewalk gets built whenever the house does, whether that's thirty, forty, fifty years from now, that's just how the cookie crumbles. And we had a requirement that the sidewalks had to be built within two years, but that was never enforced because, you know, the prior administration didn't want to be a bad guy going back and telling developers after they were out of subdivisions, you know, that you've gotta go back and build the sidewalks. So we had that rule, but we never enforced that rule. So we've had three different rules and requirements. And certainly, you know, the, do all the sidewalks prior, you know, it has the advantage that number one, you get all your ADA elevations correct, two, you don't have places like out toward Walmart on the one, on the subdivision to the west of Thompson Hall Road where the sidewalk goes straight into a fire plug, you know, and the fire plug will have to be moved, and the sidewalk wrapped around outside of the right-of-way to eventually connect to the sidewalk whenever there's one on one eighty-one going to Walmart. But there, you know, there are advantages of having them built in the beginning, but then there's the disadvantage that, you know, people supposedly can't cover them properly when they build the house and crack them up.
And just, this is a continuing, even internally, we've debated this a half a dozen times, and I'm on the side of, at the end of two years, you know, they should be finished. But I also see the, the, some of the points that, that are being made, so not as a part of this project, but, you know, it's probably a conversation we need to continue and see if we can improve in some way.
And, and from a, a long-term maintenance, this, this is one of the challenges about saying, okay, regardless of what the status of the development is, we're gonna put all the sidewalks in in two years. The, the sidewalks are generally by our regulations contained within the public right-of-way. Of course, as part of this final plat approval, there will be something sent to the council to accept the public right-of-ways for, for ownership and maintenance by the city, subject to a two-year warranty. So let's say that, that, so we, we have corresponding timelines that we accept the right-of-ways, and we also say, okay, your two years is up, you've only built ten percent of your houses, put the sidewalks in. Now, once those sidewalks are in, they, they belong to the city to maintain. Then the challenge is, the economy changes, or a different developer comes in, buys all the remaining lots, and destroys every sidewalk as he builds the house. Oh, I didn't do that. I don't know who did that. That was already like that. It's the taxpayers that then are burying the cost to fix the sidewalks. And just.
If the city gives them a building, you know, if the city gives them a, you know, final, you know, certificate of occupancy it is, if the city says, yeah, we'll give you the CO when you fix your sidewalk, we don't care who damaged it.
I'm, I'm just playing both sides of the devil's advocate.
I guarantee you that six hundred and forty dollar repair will be done.
You know, I don't know what the perfect solution is. I, I, I have no problem with saying that you can only bond sidewalks in a, in a single phase for twenty-four months post-rule. I wouldn't have a problem with that because, because other than extreme circumstances, it appears to be the developing pattern today is they're trying to do phases and sizes that they can kind of build out within a, in a reasonable time period. So, but, you know, back when we, in the bad old days of oh-six, when we were getting phases that had two-hundred-and-twenty-five lots in it, we saw the consequences of that. So, but we hadn't seen too many singular phases that big. But, you know, I, I don't know what the solution is, and I think we also got to discuss, how do we handle the historic older areas that are outside city limits like Montrose, or areas that are in the planning jurisdiction, that one, once, once it's done, the city has no say. So are we, you know, or do we need to look at pedestrian connectivity from a, a, a more defined area that's realistic? Because right now, our position, we've adopted from guidance from this body, is that we're going to address sidewalks in every application you, you see, even if it makes no sense. In the case of the one we just looked at, the corner lot has an existing house on it. So it may be maintained in its existing form for the next hundred and fifty years, so there's never gonna be a sidewalk built on that corner. But the lot that's being created, that's, that's additional, when they built that house, so you would have, in this case, just one little frontage of sidewalks on, on Adams Street, I believe it is, that, that literally went from one side of the lot to the other and would probably be that way for the rest of our lives. But that's where we've gotta get some, some, some guidance of what y'all are looking for. I'm a big proponent of sidewalks. Mr. Turner and his organization, Single Tax, has gotten into the sidewalk business. They have been building sidewalks in places that we wish we'd have built them when those places developed initially. I, I'm luckily finishing up two big sidewalk grants, completing links on, on Manly Road, Twin Beach, and putting a big link in on County Route thirteen. People are excited about that. It is funny, I, I got wore out by a very nice citizen today, that where we stopped the sidewalk and crossed the road to go to the other side, his house was the next one down, and he says, why didn't you at least get to my driveway? Okay? And we're gonna figure a way to get to his driveway. But, but, you know, it's a, sidewalks is a tough business, in the senses, we want them, but we also want them to be delivered in a way that, that one, gives us a good product. And I gotta compliment Eric and his staff at building, they have, they have become sidewalk inspectors, meaning before the CO, they're out there with their smart levels, making sure the crosswalks are in ADA compliance, that the interface with the driveway and everything else doesn't create a complacency problem. And we, I think we, we've really fixed a lot of the sins of the past. Now, yes, we still get the sidewalk builder who doesn't even bother to move the street sign, they just form it right up, and next thing you know, you have a street sign right in the middle of the sidewalk. Go, go figure, you know? And then they act surprised when you say that's not acceptable. But, but I'm, we're looking for guidance there. And I don't have the answers for all the answers, so.
Just had a quick comment to say that, you know, I can live with the, the occasional sidewalk from lot line to lot line. In contrast to, when we first moved here, my husband and I would just laugh at, and it's the kind of thing you don't see when you live here, you only see when you're just arriving for the first time and checking things out. How many, how many paths to front doors just stopped ten feet from the street? We're like, what? Who are the, who's doing the, and it's where a sidewalk would be.
Yeah.
You know, in these lovely little paths, and, I mean, that's kind of the flip side of that, is if you don't inhabit the public realm, then people just, you're just gonna drop off the face of the earth when you hit it.
And I will remind you, because I think this is a very positive thing. If you recall, we've had two developments that have frontage on Section Street, south of Twin Beach, and, and both of those have a good amount of frontage, and they're gonna put sidewalks on that frontage as well as part of the internal. Now granted, there's gonna be a big link here, and a gap, and another big link, but eventually, one day, those will all connect to something. So I, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to put a missing link out there all by its lonesome, because one day, it will find an end. I mean, and it may be fifty years from now, and that planning commission's gonna say, that planning commission fifty years ago was smart, they already thought that that's where sidewalks are gonna be. So I, I'm a fan of, of saying, hey, I, I think even a sixty-foot length of sidewalk is better than none. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
I have a sidewalk thing, just for a moment. Very rarely in my line of work, every day that I'm in a development or a neighborhood, do I see a damaged neighborhood sidewalk. But now, in our, the most prevalent areas of pedestrian, scenic ninety-eight, all the way to the hotel, our, our sidewalks are deplorable. I mean, they're dangerous, they're right next to the road, they've got cracks and holes in them. That's where we need to be focusing our sidewalk work, rather than neighborhoods that falls on a builder, that very rarely do we see that dump truck run over the, the sidewalk and damage the sidewalk where it's just one home and not one person in the road.
And, and, and just so you know, I mean, we, the city council is very generous to us in, in our operational budget, we, I think we have fifty thousand dollars in sidewalk maintenance money, and, and this current budget, we'll spend just about every bit of it. I processed two requests for work orders for sidewalks that were either uplifted by trees or had been damaged. We do concrete work all the time, and we do encourage our citizens, if they see a problem with sidewalk, please call it in, because that work order will get into the system and will result in a crew getting out there and, and repairing that sidewalk. The biggest challenge we have is that, one, street trees are wonderful, I love them, they're incompatible with sidewalks, but we love sidewalks too. So we just have to work, you know, because trees grow and they, they will move slabs on grades, and, you know, our utilities at times have to go and, and dig and fix things, and we gotta then repair sidewalks and roads associated with that. So that, that's something I think the city's committed to, but the biggest thing is, is that we don't, we don't, we're not, we're not omnipresent, we, we don't know a problem until somebody tells us there's a problem, and, and we're made aware of it, we will address it in the time of man. So, you know, and, and then scenic ninety-eight and the, and, and the Eastern Shore Trail is tough, because the parts that's in the city we maintain, but those parts in Montrose that run into the county, and, and it's, you know, no offense to my friends at the county, they're not real responsive, they, they don't, they really don't want to be in the sidewalk business.
They highlighted them all, but they haven't done anything with them yet.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. All right. Firethorn, do I have any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Tracery.
Tracery, excuse me, I pulled Firethorn out. Why don't we go ahead and make a motion on Firethorn, we'll get it out of the way and then go back to tracery.
Go right ahead.
Do I have a motion or any further discussion on the tracery?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve subject to staff recommendation.
I have a motion to approve subject two. Do I have a second? Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next item on the agenda is Greenbrier at Firethorn, Firethorn a final plat approval as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilmembers, a routine, routine final plat approval, phase five of Firethorn.
Buford, if you don't do any, any discussion about density, I promise I won't say a word about sidewalks.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a routine, a routine final, final plat approval for Firethorn, phase five. This completes Firethorn. This completes Firethorn Development in its current form. You see the statistics on your screen right there. Mr. Dewberry is with us here tonight, I mean, Mr. Humphrey is here with us tonight, if we have any questions, on behalf of the engineer representing the developer. Now, this is thirty lots on thirteen-point-nine acres. You see the other statistics in front of you, as well as parent parcels PPIN. I do want to make certain you notice this, Commissioners, this is the, this is the final plat. This is the overall. I hope it shows up, the, it's a little bit lighter colored. Wanted you to make certain you saw what part of Firethorn we are considering tonight. This is the area in light red. This is very simple, Commissioners, because this particular phase relies on the other phases for drainage, utilities, lip, sewer lift stations, et cetera. So therefore, we see, so therefore, because we are not dealing with sewer lift stations, we don't have to have that standardized condition of approval. We do have the, a fairly standard condition of approval, the completion of the punchless items to the satisfaction of Fairhope City staff. So recommendation of approval, that is case number SD nineteen point forty-four, if I did not mention it earlier. This phase has a name, which is Greenbrier, in the sixty-eight ventures vernacular. Happy to answer questions, Commissioners.
Any questions? If not, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing with any of the two people in the public, one of which being Emily Sun, would like to speak to this item. If not, I will close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the Commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case number SD one nine point four-four, phase five of Greenbrier at Firethorn, Firethorn, I move that we approve subject to staff recommendation.
I've got a motion to approve subject two. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you look up the letter supporting that package, I believe?
And, and Councilman, I appreciate that question, and we, we addressed that with the building official. We, I, I did respond personally to the, to the citizen and did speak with them and basically referred them to the building official. I think that some construct, construction activities that I could not necessarily verify if it was associated with a home building, with a home under construction, or this phase, was not really able to isolate that, and referred her to the building official for more information. And Mr. Cortinas answers those types of, of complaints from time to time.
All right. All in favor to approve subject to staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, public hearing, to consider the request of the City of Fairhope Planning and Zoning Department to accept resolution two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty for proposed amendment, Article Four, Section H, multiple occupancy projects on the City of Fairhope subdivision regulations.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We discussed this under old new business at our last planning commission meeting, and as the chairman read, Article Four, Section H, this involves the multiple occupancy projects. And there are, in addition to the, you notice we're using strike-through and redlining to show the amendments, very, very simple amendments. And what we talked about last time is adding, is removing the word site plan, replacing it with preliminary plat and plans. We discussed that last time. Since then, and with Mr. Watson's assistance, we do have two other edits. If you'll notice in paragraph one, you'll notice there in red, or type of ownership or right of possession. And we want to make it very, very clear and identify for potential applicants that the best scenario that this addresses and that language helps us with is that when someone, when a developer develops an MOP, and then they wish to use a condominium declaration as their instrument of ownership, that it makes certain that we redirect them to the other parts of the subdivision regulations that require a plat approval for a condominium declaration. So that wording assists us with that regard. Article, paragraph D and E, no change, particle F, has that very minor edit we talked about last time. Same thing with article G. Now, our paragraph three, each preliminary plat and plans, as we've discussed, shall be submitted in accordance with the requirements of Section C, note the comma, which has been added, and the final plat and plans shall be submitted, submitted in accordance with Section D of Article Four hereof relating to preliminary and final plats, submittals, respectively, period. And we strike the rest. The effect of that edit is to require both the preliminary and final process for MOPs. Final edit in paragraph four, note that we're making it very clear that if there are four or fewer units, four or fewer units, the fee will be that of a minor subdivision, five or more units is that of a major subdivision. The justification there, Commissioners, is that if we receive a very large multiple occupancy project that is, that can be ninety, a hundred, or more, more units, that's equivalent to a major subdivision. So it's logical, and for the amount of staff time and the amount of city expenditure to review that, that we charge an appropriate fee that is in line with the subdivision regulations for a typical subdivision. So Commissioners, certainly happy to answer any questions about this proposed revision, proposed amendment to the subdivision regulations. Reminder that the planning commission is the approving authority for the subdivision regulations.
Any questions for Buford? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Any questions, comments?
I wasn't really here for this one. You have the questions and stuff, I've seen a lot of these. So am I hearing y'all correctly that you'll have to come back after the development and come with a final plat? Is that what the intent is?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And, and appreciate Mr. Smith's question, and for, for audience that may be watching or watching or recording, what we talked about last time in greater detail, multiple occupancy projects can be very challenging because the subdivision regulations do not require that final plat process. The reason we need this is so that, at the end of the project, there is a clear close-out process where as-built drawings, inspection reports, video inspection of utilities, if applicable, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We have a means of carrying that out, and then any utility easements, especially utilities that are dedicated to the city, but roadways are not dedicated to the city, so there's no right-of-way within a development. We have a means of very clearly closing that out and recording for, recording, and properly recording what is in that development.
Would that still apply to a single building being separated into tenant spaces? That seems unnecessary.
So, and, and that was something we talked about last time, I appreciate the Commissioners asking the question. There may be, there may be, and from time to time, there may possibly be a type of development that its intensity is low enough that, that the, that it would be a reasonable request for the applicant to request simultaneous preliminary and final approval.
Just like we do on a minor.
On a minor subdivision. If someone had three units and only three units, and they were not installing infrastructure or minimal infrastructure, certainly that would be a reasonable request that we can handle with a waiver process.
I, I was thinking along those same lines, because a lot of the MOPs that we see before y'all are single buildings, multiple units within the building, but the infrastructure for the city is normally a meter, and a water line that's private from there on out to the building, and the same on the sanitary sewer side. And so I would, I would like there to be a defined way for that to move forward, because that's always the issue, is we, it looks fine on paper, we, I understand the intent, if there is infrastructure that needs to be videoed for the city. intent, if there is infrastructure that needs to be videoed for the city's sake, and, but right now, I just don't see the means for one of these that is just a single building, regardless of its ten units or three units. If it's the city's infrastructure, starting, stopping at the right-of-way, it seems like a unusual burden, because I'm assuming this is going to hold up a CO, hold up someone, a tenant moving into a building, and it just seems like a, a burden. I would love to see the MOP process go the other direction, not more regulation, more time put on it, so.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the question, and, and the, the response there is that it's, it's very occasional, and I think we've had this happen once since I've been with Fairhope, where we actually had a four or five lot subdivision. I think we had about eighteen months ago, we, this, the planning commission considered a five lot subdivision, and the request was to grant preliminary and final approval simultaneously because of the conditions involved with the development. And I think the situation was, all the lots were on an existing road, all the infrastructure was there, it had, it had existing drainage via, via, via ditches in the right-of-way. So, so that was one of those circumstances where they used the waiver process to allow that preliminary and final consideration simultaneously. So, when we see those types of situations with an MOP, you know, that's certainly not, not, not an unusual request or something that would be unreasonably recommended for denial. If you had the situation where it could be accomplished simultaneously, you know, certainly a waiver would be in order.
Do you feel comfortable with that? Do you feel comfortable with that, Ken?
I was just sitting here thinking, hearing everyone's points. It's just hard to have a regulation that fits every scenario, particularly when we talk about these MOPs. We saw one, I think, a meeting or two ago where it was, was that ten or twenty units? The Tens, I think, was the name of it. And sometimes we see a single building with multiple units in it. It's just hard to write a regulation that is a one-size-fits-all. So, I think what Buford is proposing, that, and as the commission has done over and over again, exercise common sense when you apply these regulations is, is maybe the best we can do.
What does section D, article four, say exactly? Is it in here? It references section D, article four, I'm just wondering if that's not part of what this is doing. I mean, is it?
So, section, so article four, section D, that is the final plat requirement section of the subdivision regulations.
Right.
That, that is the final plat requirement, and so, so this would basically have the preliminary and final plat requirement enforced.
And I, I'll sit down and I'll stop arguing the point. I just know, before, when I come before y'all with waivers, and they're the same waivers you see over and over again, y'all keep saying that if, if we're going to keep granting these waivers, why don't we change the rules? And I will tell you right now, ninety percent of the MOP projects that have come before y'all from me are single buildings, multiple units, and we're about to create a scenario where you're going to be getting a lot of waivers. There are other MOPs, and I understand that. I'm just, I'm just saying, if there is a way to word it to where it's not a waiver, that looks like I'm trying to get special privileges up here every time I come for a single building with multiple units, which is going to trigger the MOP, that I have to ask for a waiver, because that always stirs up a whole nother finding of facts whether we can grant this waiver or not. And I don't know what's triggering it. I, I understand what Buford, there are scenarios where the MOP needs to have some infrastructure, because I've seen the conditions of approval.
Yeah, but it can be single buildings too that require infrastructure that way. I mean, that, just because a single building doesn't mean there's not a, a water line that may lead to a fire hydrant that the developer wants us to operate and maintain, and it's on that property because of a distance requirement. That's why I was asking what's in section four. I mean, it may reference that very thing you're talking about as a waiver that's already in the requirement.
Well, and, and Commissioners, I think the, in, in that section of article four, that contains, that final plat requirement section, it contains the provisions where the requirements of as-built drawings are clearly laid out. Commissioners, what I'll submit to you, certainly if the commission wished to table this, and that we can, you know, investigate, investigate some additional wording for that scenario, certainly no objection to that if that's the pleasure of the commission.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, the reason I was asking Ken if he was comfortable with us doing the waivers, is if we should just put another sentence or another paragraph in stating, in, you know, minimal, single, you know, minimal, single or double building developments where no, nowhere next to no infrastructure is being added, that, you know, the commission has the right to grant waivers.
About the particular language on that, Mr. Chairman?
And if we're going to that extent, if we're looking at very minor things, is there a boundary we could put around that where it can be done administratively? Is there a threshold?
That would make a lot more.
I feel like in the meeting of the preliminary, this should be a conversation between two people. If this is what, it's only one unit, can we do this?
It needs to be clear, though.
One unit, no infrastructure?
Well, I mean, if you have an existing building with a, that's a three-unit, multiple occupancy, realistically, they could have fewer occupants than two, you know, units that are both restaurants, or, I mean, at some point, does it, what are you gaining?
Well, Commissioners, my experience with MOPs in my time working for Fairhope is that the only way to force the submission of the closeout documents that we need, because some of these MOPs have drainage systems that have retention or detention, which requires executing a, an O and M plan and agreement that has to be recorded. So, the only way we can get the closeout documents we have to have is to sometimes have seven, eight, ten conditions of approval on every single MOP. So, so this effort will simplify that process and give it a definitive process for carrying out that, because it's back referencing the, the, the final plat requirements of the subdivision regulations. But in terms of the waiver process or the administrative approval for a minor MOP, and maybe we create that vernacular right now, certainly I am, certainly have no heartburn with tabling this endeavor to a future meeting, so we can vet that.
Excuse me. There aren't any new substantive subdivision requirements being added by these revisions. It's really procedural in how we get to what Buford's talking about as to a, you know, a checkoff that things are done. As you see the language that is stricken through here, when I started out with y'all three years ago, we were requiring site plans, and then the development had to comply with that site plan. At some point administratively, we moved away from that and had this checkoff process that, that Wayne and, I guess Buford developed together. And now what's being proposed to implement the checking off of the things that are supposed to be done is that they have to come back for final plat approval. They'll get preliminary plat to do what they're supposed to do, and then come back, and the way to make sure it gets done isn't like the plats, final plats you just, just approved. It will come back to y'all for final plat approval.
Well, with no further language, if we, if something comes to us that has no infrastructure issues at all, maybe something with CBD, just, you know, you would be comfortable with us as this is written to give preliminary and final plat approval at the same time.
I mean, I'd like the idea of an administrative waiver. I don't want to let go of that idea.
I see what you're saying.
And.
I'm sorry, Rebecca.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Import sort of a minor mop provision like we have for minor subdivisions, that there's no new infrastructure, no streets.
So, I don't know the process of course, how, how much more work is it to do a final plat? How much more time is it, are we looking at? I know we've developed this to protect, the whole reason we're doing this is because what we're presented and what we see and what we go out to look at when it's finished is not the same thing. Not at all. And so, that's why we've developed a lot of this. But, so where, what, what timeframe and how much more money and what?
I'm gonna say the cases where there's nothing else to look at.
And that's my biggest concern, is looking at these single buildings, the buildings there, sometimes they're existing buildings, and they're just carving out tenant spaces, and we're adding a forty-five day process for that client after everything's done to come in for the final plat. I, I totally agree why he, why Buford needs this to be, make sure the, the documents are in place. I don't know that forty-five, if they can handle it administratively, to say, yes, we've got this, this, and this, here is the plan. You know, if things have changed, obviously, it needs to come back to y'all. And that's something that, that could be at their discretion, but, I mean, I don't, I've never owned a business, but I can imagine having.
If it's something small, then it probably wouldn't take forty-five days, I wouldn't think.
What's that?
If it's, you know, something that could be administered in a, of, one of your preliminary meetings.
And that, that's what, what I was hoping to be able to steer one, I hadn't seen this until I was just sitting there, and I saw that, and just realized that for a lot of clients, that's a, if we're coming back before y'all, it's not a one-week, two-week process, it's a forty-five day process.
It's, it just, it just seems to me that the more that, that we could allow, especially items that are of minor importance, that staff could take care of, the less time it's going to take for, you know, the client, their client is one thing, but in terms of us having to see it again, it just, it just doesn't make any sense to me, if it's something that's, that's fairly minor.
Well, and it's not just us having to see it again, it's somebody having to prepare this packet, it's the client having the forty-five days submitting, if it's something like that, where we're not gaining anything. You know, if it's, if it's so minor that it's a subdivided building and we're not seeing anything new, it's not, you know, we don't want to create bureaucratic procedures that aren't helpful.
Exactly.
Right. I think a simple.
One of two things, I think.
Minor, minor is subjective. So, I mean, what, what we think is minor, what they think is minor, what Larry thinks is minor, so the more we can get in writing to where it takes the subjective part out of it and reduce the burden that y'all are talking about, about producing the packets and coming back in the forty-five day wait, I mean, if it, if it common sits, fits it, and like Larry's saying, don't come up here every meeting looking for a waiver for something that we're all going to agree to, and, and.
That's right.
Staff's gonna recommend, that's a waste of time.
That's right.
We just need to define it.
I think there are two things I think either Ken can tell us, that as it's written, you're comfortable with us giving preliminary and final plat approval in a meeting. And if as it's written, you're happy to do that, then the staff comes in and recommends preliminary and final plat approval due to the fact that there's no infrastructure being affected here.
Well, and, infrastructure and.
Or do we need to put one more caveat in there, that, that in cases where, you know, there's no utilities being, you know, we could easily enough put a sentence in, and cases where there are no utilities being, you know, touched with fewer than X number of units, and no utilities being touched on single buildings, that the staff has the authority to do the final plat themselves.
Well, and Chairman, Commissioners, since we have conducted, since we have opened the public hearing, and Chairman, I, I don't remember if you closed the public hearing just yet, since we do have a public hearing, you do have to take action upon this item. So, my request and my, my recommendation to the commission is to table this item to the next meeting, and we will, we will, we will work on that, we will work on that and have an additional revision for your consideration.
Yeah, and I think I heard Ken say he wanted to think on it anyway.
I, I would, I think it may be as direct as, we imported D of article two, section D, we didn't import E or a parallel to it for simultaneous preliminary and final plat approval of an MOP. And that may be, if, maybe we could talk among ourselves.
Absolutely.
Get some input, what's, what is minor in the context of a mop? Is it four units or less? Then we could have a parallel provision for, like we have for standard.
I, I think if you put units and how much infrastructure would be involved, y'all could do that pretty cool.
We, we, we will be able to figure that out, Commissioners, and.
And that's not gonna call, solve a hundred percent of them, but we can probably throw one cast nut and get ninety percent of them.
Yes, sir. I mean, we, there is, certainly, we do not wish to weaponize the regulations, and so, we, we'll be able to figure that out and have something for you at the next meeting, if you, if it's the pleasure of the commission to, to table it to the next meeting.
Buford, as long, and I guess it goes even further than just the MOP, but as it pertains to, to many things that we deal with, or we ultimately will have to deal with, it seems to me, if we've got staff that we trust, that, that is here and is part of it, that we ought to be giving them as much authority, as long as we're not, as long as we're not taking away our own authority and relinquishing that control completely to staff. But in minor situations, I, I mean, it, it's got the capability to be ratcheted up to the point that this planning commission will go till three o'clock in the mornings at some point down the road, and that is no fun.
I agree.
Not at all. Not at all. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll make a mission, a motion to table.
Close the public hearing.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and now I'll accept your motion.
I'll make a motion to table SD nineteen point forty-five.
You'll have a second. Got a second down here. Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next item on agenda is DC nineteen seventeen, a public hearing to consider the request of the City of Fairhope Planning and Zoning Department for amendments to the zoning warrants for PUDs. And is this a recommendation?
It is. We would ask that the planning commission make a recommendation to the council to approve these and any revisions we have during this discussion. So, if you're ready for.
I'm ready, yes, sir.
I am going to, there is also one other amendment to, that we, we carried over from last month, I'm gonna touch on that one first, because it is the only one that has a, a correction to make, and that's the section on nonconformities. If you will look at that section, I think you all have, have that language in your packet, and we're gonna, there, there was just some, a transcription error, and, and that needs to be corrected. B, nonconstrum, nonconforming structures, number one, that first.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, where are we?
We're in the nonconforming.
I don't know that that got handed out, I just have it from my other meetings.
We don't have that.
Um, you gave it.
All we got is article five.
Okay. Procedurally, I don't think we can amend that one as much.
Oh, cheating.
I can pass it around.
We'll go ahead, let, let Emily check into this one, we'll go ahead and talk about PUDs, and we can come back to that if we need to. There's, there's not a whole lot of changes to this one, so I won't go through it in detail. I think we've had, this is the same language we reviewed with a couple of minor changes. And, and really, probably the biggest minor change was adding the kind of sunset clause and the failure to begin construction, and we have changed the date on that to basically be one year, and then an extension would be for another year instead of two, six months.
You've got it, you don't have that stated correctly in here, I don't think. If you get on down, the planning commission made no sooner than sixty days prior to the end of said one-year period, upon the written request of the applicant, extends such one-year period for a period not more than six months. I think you meant, that mean, that needs to be.
That needs to be amended, so.
An additional year.
Yes. And we will, we will make.
Yeah, we talked, I think we talked it the last time, about two six, didn't we, Lee? Two six-month extensions, but, but.
And what happened?
There wasn't any reason.
Right.
Just set us one year, and then just delete that.
We do it for another year, now I got two years to get it done.
Right. And, and we settled on that in a, in, in individual, and it just didn't make that revision. So, I will do that before it, it goes to the council in the language, that if you choose to approve this.
It does, it just, what happened was that for a period of not more than six months, if, wasn't removed. I think other than that, it's correct. I think it was just, I think the one year was added, but the six month wasn't taken out.
It wasn't taken out.
Right.
So, if you remove those two for.
Got it.
Ten words, I think we're, we're back to what we discussed.
Well, it, well, wait a minute.
It doesn't really say how long that.
No, it says the applicant extends such one-year period. One-year period, I think, is referring to the first year.
Yeah.
And then it needs to be extended for a period of not more than one additional year.
So, to wrap that up, one year.
So to wrap that up, one year in the original approval, and then one extension allowable for another year.
One year for the extension.
And we'll make sure that language is clear.
Okay.
We'll revise that before we get to the council. And then, since, since last month, we did add a reversion, if a, if this is triggered and a PUD has not begun, there has to be a reversion process, and the way that read last month, basically, it said that it had to go to revert to underlying whatever the zoning was previously, which can create some problems when we have annexed properties and some similar options, things that can happen. So what we've chosen to do in this case is revert to RA, that is, you know, more of the more restrictive uses we have, and I think that's pretty standard when something reverts and goes away.
It will, it will, most of the time mean someone's coming back to us for development of that property in the future.
Well, let me ask you something. I don't think it says it here, but, and I understand, and I don't remember, how do we get to going back to RA? What if, what if you zone something else, and you come in and you want to do a planned unit development?
You don't want me to have to come ask.
We're, we're, what we're proposing here is you go to RA, and then if you want to develop that property-
What if you were R3, R2, prior to coming to, to coming to the city for a PUD?
You go back to RA?
You go back to RA, there is a default.
Do we want to do that?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioners, there's language in the definitions section of the zoning ordinance that basically declares RA as a placeholder.
It's a holding, it's a holding, always intended for that.
Yes, sir. So it's already contemplated, it's already contemplated by the zoning ordinance.
They're going to have to come back and-
Let me ask you a question, if, if there are some PUDs that are out there now that hadn't done anything, and we adopt this, do those now start the two-year window to be?
No.
They're done and that's all you-
Unless they had some provisions within that PUD.
How come we can't do that?
Good question.
They can't do it.
Now, we potentially, and it's not a part of this, so I want to be very clear, because this will require further review, there is a potential, if we have something like a master development plan, and that PUD comes and is amended in the future, we can then engage an existing PUD that needs to be amended with this sunset clause. But, but for those that might have been approved 15 years ago, and, and want to continue using that the same way they have, we're-
Do we have any idea how many of those, or if we even have any?
Yeah, we'd have a few.
Parcel-wise, I don't know about the number, total number of PUDs, parcel-wise, I did account, and I can't remember, it was high 60s.
I know, there's about three right across from the rec center on Greeno Road.
There's high 60s-
Until that old trailer park there.
Yeah, and the two lots going north and then-
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few, so that will be, and, and there is also one other thing that's come up recently, even since the last meeting, that if y'all, if the planning commission chose to, we can have it ready by the time it gets to council, but it kind of needs to be addressed here. We've seen some PUDs in other locations require, and we use the language preliminary master development plan here, and then once it's codified, it becomes a final. Those two languages, preliminary and final, are used in some places to work its way through planning commission and council twice. And the intent there is in preliminary phase, it's more, very much conceptual, developers don't have to waste their time in getting into heavy details, but can get good feedback from both, both planning commission and council. And then final comes back in with the details. So it gives a developer a little comfort level when they can start working, you know, okay, we have at least, we're heading in the right direction, now we can invest a little more into the project to do those elevations and look at architecture and really get some of the more details that make a PUD, you know, what a PUD should be. So if that's an option you want to pursue, just make that in the recommendation, and we'll, we'll make sure that happens before council, or we can, we can review that a little bit further in the future. And always amend anything we get approved.
Was that a question?
That was, if you, I'd be happy to, to discuss it, I know, ending up on PUDs is probably the best, after a three-hour meeting, it's not what you want to discuss, so.
I'm looking at some areas that make some sense, whether it needs to go to both the city council and the PMZ twice, you know, I don't know, but-
I don't, I don't think if it does, it may not need to be a PUD. It may, it may simply be, you know, that's where underlying zoning comes into play and asks for rezoning, but, but I think, I think PUDs are kind of a unique project-
Should be.
And should not be, you know, I don't think that's a-
You've got two types of PUDs, you've got the unique projects and you've got the people trying to get the small lots.
Right, and, and I think, and this is unique to my experience here, when we see, a lot of the PUDs we see are come in as final engineered plans, and once that level hit of detail hits, it's hard to budge, you know, those projects, because they have a lot of investment in that project. So if we can at least get those in in some way, and this may not be the answer, but in some way, get them in more conceptually before they get to a final plan, we might can make those projects, you know, a little better and kind of reach the goals of both the city and the developer.
I think that's a good idea, the one thing that bothers me when we get some of these, you know, just for reviews, is that, you know, it doesn't have staff recommendations on it. So you get it for review and you're expected to kind of say how you feel about it without a staff recommendation, which, you know, I generally, you know, with one exception today, sorry, but you can't be mad at me since Auburn beat Alabama, but I generally go with the staff recommendations, except today, which is an unusual, you know, circumstance normally, because the staff recommendations usually relate to the subdivision regs and what's going on, and it's sometimes hard to say, well, yeah, sure, it looks great to me, and then, you know, it comes back and, well, these setbacks aren't hit, and this, you know, triggers this and this triggers that, and you get a bad staff recommendation after you've told somebody it looks nice, but in some of those cases, you know, if somebody wants kind of a preliminary review, if it had some staff guidance as to where this would or wouldn't hit, you know, kind of the subdivision regs or, you know, the zoning areas and whatnot with the PUD, you know, it might be a nice thing.
Well, and, you know, I, I think we get a lot of opportunity to talk to the applicants. I think where the, the true value is the people that are voting on that, so what this would do is at least put a commerce, put that in the conversation, and at least in the preliminary stage, we don't have to do such a solid review. I mean, that, that's kind of, we almost just pass that along, that application along, because it's a PUD, they can propose anything they want, if they want to ignore half the regulations in here and take their shot at it, they can do that, and it gets your, you know, it gets the more public perception of that project before they're investing a lot more in the details. So in that sense, I think your, your opinion's much more important than ours, in a PUD, and I think that would be valuable to everyone involved. And, and staff recommendation, I mean, that's something that we've been debating, changing the language on that, I don't think, you know, kind of way we're looking at things are presenting the facts and whether they're meeting the guidelines, that doesn't inherently mean we approve of a project, and I think that kind of gets taken out of its intent sometimes. We, we look at it as, as does it meet requirements at base level, that doesn't mean it's a nominal project in a zoning case. You know, subdivision's a little more clear, but we, as we saw tonight, there may be cases where it checks the boxes, but still may not be a great project. So I think kind of the, the language we use is sometimes a little strong in that we recommend it, but I think, I think we'll be clear on, on what we're looking at at each phase.
What are we doing, five, but not four?
We are not doing the nonconformity, we did not advertise that.
Do I advertise it?
Does Ken, can we discuss this?
Advertise to the public?
Oh, yeah.
Commissioners, a client will look at it and take it up?
Can we just table it, Pam?
What we've kind of waited on, if you're willing, it's a simple one, it's one sentence, you know, we looked at it, I can kind of pass this one around.
Why don't you come pass that one around?
Here's another one.
And I can read, what, what was-
You could start on that end, because we've got this.
You've got one?
Well, why don't we finish this one first?
Yeah.
Is that the, are we going to make two motions on this, or are they all record? We wanted to know.
I do have a question about five before we-
Wait, can, are you-
Lee.
Okay. First, first couple of words, which is not-
He was going to change this, though. Sorry, what I have is, is-
Hunter, I do have a quick question about five, talking about the size, and I guess there, I think we've talked about it, but the minimum of three acres, you know, going back to Lee's comment about people just trying to get the smaller lot size, and I guess there's a, you know, damn if you do, damn if you don't, as far as that lot, if you increase it to give a, try to get more flexibility in their design and get something unique, then you're also increasing your options of taking, say you make the minimum five, and now they got five acres to try to, you know, jam as many small lots in there as possible.
Right, and, and we have talked about it, I don't, the reason I didn't propose to change that one is because there's kind of, there's another idea we're, we're floating around that create, and I don't want to get into too much, because that's just in staff discussion right now, but it is basically a smaller PUD for residential development only.
We can see it.
So if we can do that and have two, in this sense, where, where a lot of these projects are more mixed-use type, I think an, upping that acreage would be very appropriate. But we do have some feedback and people asking us to reduce the acreage, so I think it's almost you need two tools and not try to pull one tool out of the toolbox and do everything. But until then, and I'm okay, if we want to increase the acreage right now, if that's a recommendation, I, I don't have any problems with it, but it may align better if we can get another tool to address those residential only type projects.
Can we pass it back?
You want to pass that down?
Sorry, that was my note, so if you can't read that, that is-
And the only thing about a minimum size is they'll just have to go by whatever the zoning of that particular location is for whatever they decide to develop, and there is no flexibility in, you know, design freedom or whatever for a unique feature within the property.
A unique, yes, they, well, they would rely on our underlying zoning, if they don't meet those, if they don't meet three acres or whatever, if we were to up it, you do get some projects that are well-intended, I mean, we've seen some really neat ideas that, you know, might, might be the, the answer to some of our problems.
And they could also go through the waiver process and say, hey, this is a hardship to try to do something on this property.
In some cases, some are just prohibited, and then they're looking for administrative appeal, and that just isn't going to work.
We've had some cases where we would have liked to have had smaller PUDs in the Greeno Road area, like when the Sugar Kettle Cafe came in, and everybody loved it, you know, would have put a great little business on Greeno, would have renovated an old, you know, historic building, and we all loved it, but had to deny it, and in that case, if we could have had a two-acre PUD, we could have approved it. So their arguments either way, and also when somebody comes in with one of those chopped-up PUDs, just deny it, I mean, that's one thing, it's easy to deny a PUD without getting into any legal trouble.
That's right, it's very subjective and, and it sends a good message.
Because it is a zoning, it's not like a subdivision where you got to explain yourself and exactly why this doesn't meet the subdivision regs in a PUD, and say, I don't like it.
Yes, that subjectivity is, is available to, to both parties, both the planning commission and council.
So now there is no area restriction to put-
Three acres.
Three acres.
Three acres is the current, and we could change that, but I think-
But I mean, I mean, but what we're talking about, though, is to change that.
We probably need to, I think we probably need to put a committee together and think a little more, and not just do it off the cuff.
And I think that, that would be a great idea, and we can kind of bounce some of the ideas we have, because it would be different requirements, if, if you, where they're big and where they're not, one's more, got to be clear on what type of project that's, you know, if you're going to up that to 12 acres, you're going to expect that to be more mixed-use and have some commercial components or, you know, retail, something along with single-family or at least mixed residential, whereas, you know, maybe a cottage-style home PUD that's only two acres might be more appropriate with, but with different requirements, so we'll, we'll, we can look at those.
This is a, a change for a ordinance, so this would actually be decided by the city council, so we simply make a recommendation. Would anybody like to make a motion to recommend these?
And I'm going to, I'm going to read this, just since there's a correction on what, what went out, in the, the nonconforming-
It didn't go out.
Yeah, it's not, well, it was, it was in last month, so I want to, I want to make sure that it's on record, what we're, what we're proposing, and that would be section, Article 7, Section B, Number 1, shall read, is what we're proposing, nonconformities may not be increased or expanded in any manner, including, but not limited to horizontally, vertically, or otherwise, and that is, is the period. That, just for those-
I'd make a motion that we recommended the city council approval of the suggested changes in Article 4 and 5 of, as proposed by staff.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor of recommending approval for Articles 4 and 5 to the city council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion-
As written, as we looked at it.
Yes, as, as corrected.
Yeah, I looked at it, I read it.
Six minutes, one year.
Yeah.
Yes, correct. But we'll revisit the, the two preliminary and final at a later date.
Yes.
If you not pass that, it's-
Yes.
The approval extensions, does staff recommend all of these approval extensions?
Can we do them all at once? Ken, can we do them all at once?
Commissioners, yes, however, I do want to advise the commission that one of the subdivisions requesting extension, the Garner subdivision, and Ms. Boyet can tell me, how many times has that one been requested for extension? Is it three or four?
Three.
It's three times, so-
Which one?
The Garner subdivision.
SD 18.25 Garner subdivision, it's a minor subdivision.
And, and Commissioners, for, for the purposes of this meeting, we certainly don't have an objection, what I would advise the commission, though, is that if, if we do, if it does come back for a fourth extension, I think that we need an explanation for the number of, for the, the number of extensions.
Well, I'm doing a, a third, excuse me, this is the third?
Yes.
Yes, sir, third extension.
Because that's, I mean, if we looked at what we just said on the PUDs, you know, two years, so-
Yes, sir.
I would think we could do this one and one more, and then say, hey, you know, what's up, maybe, but I don't know.
Now, this is a minor subdivision that's requesting it as well.
But I'm saying, I think after two years-
Yes, sir.
You know, this is a year and a half that we're giving them, and after two years, I think you kind of raise your eyebrows a little, this-
Yes, sir.
The right-hand side has said.
So, so Commissioners, with that being said, and thank you three times, Chairman, I think that not necessarily conditioned the approval, but did want to speak into the record in advising the commission of that situation with that particular request. And y'all are okay, staff's okay with all of these extensions?
Go, clear me up, I didn't understand, what's the, what's the recommendation for the Garner one?
Just, just advising the commission, that's the third, this is the third request for extension on that particular minor subdivision.
Ken, do we have the ability to put a, put a limit on the number of these, or no?
Well, the first subdivision would have done a year, so now they're actually at two years, this would take them two and a half years, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't have one, there was no, there were no limits on extensions prior to, to tonight.
There still are, I mean, you just-
And, and Ken said we can't go back and-
That's not addressed in the regulations, you can, for good cause, extend the period, but how many times to what duration is simply not addressed in the, in the regulations, I guess we would rely upon the custom of the commission, y'all have-
So we could basically- So we could basically.
Have in the past granted these kinds of extensions.
So are you saying, basically, that we can say, okay, we'll, we'll agree one more time, and that's it?
No, we could just agree one more time, and then it would be up to the, whoever's on the P and Z at that point to say yes or no. You could either, I think, approve it or deny it right now, but I think you could, in further discussion, say, you know, to, you know, their representative here, you know, look, what's up?
I don't have an explanation for this one tonight, I wasn't expecting to actually have to even speak on this, I decided to sit here, just in case. But the first approval was 180, so then the other, so this would actually take us, I think, to the two-year mark. Not, the first approval wasn't for one year, because it was a minor division, and we requested in that initial approval 180 days. So we had the 180 days, then, and then the, this will be, I thought this would, yeah, well, this is, this will be the third, yeah, yeah.
But we've never, we've not had, we've not had a limit on, on the, on the time period within which it has to be started, Ed, but?
Yes, on subdivision.
No, he was just, in comparison to what we've discussed with the two-year limit, saying that they, they won't.
We haven't had that when this subdivision.
No, we did, we, we have had time limits on subdivisions, we have it on PUDs, because a PUD is a zoning.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
On subdivisions, they've got a year to get going.
Okay, so.
Isn't it a year to get going and a year to finish, I remember, what is the time?
One year.
Yeah, it's one year, so we have had time, and after that year, they've got to get, they have to ask for an extension. And the extension is just up to y'all, whether you want to give it or not, you don't, you absolutely don't have to give it.
Okay.
You know, if you see some change in the regulations, where you feel like, gosh, that thing's antiquated, and we've moved on, you can make a motion not to.
If it only gets us to two years, and then say, just like y'all recommended, that additionally to that, we'd want more of it, we want to know more.
Okay, do we do all of these at once?
Emily, can we do all these at once?
We can, yeah.
And staff has no problem with any of these, y'all are recommending that we extend them all, all right, I'll accept a motion.
Okay, I would move that we approve all the extensions requested for the various subdivisions.
All right, so I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and you got a, you got the second on that, we had two, two is yours, okay. So I have a motion, any further discussion? All right, so I've got a motion to approve SD 1627, 1634, 1637, 1703, and 1825 extensions as presented. Do all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion passes unanimously. All right, we're gonna discuss any Grino Road corridor?
Yes, you want, you want to do that first, okay. Monday, next Monday, a week from tonight, that will be on the council agenda to extend, I'm gonna ask to extend the moratorium. You know, just with the holiday seasons and the applications that, and the feedback we got at the special meeting we had, that this is, it took that time to kind of get the, the feedback in and get that out, so if y'all have any questions or support of that extension, just, just to be aware that, if y'all recall, that was their represent, groups that showed up, their representative asked us to, to do this. I think three more, three moratorium or two exten, moratorium and two extensions is typically, you know, frowned upon, but this was in request to, this was, this is at their request, so.
Did they come to you in meetings, or?
We've met with, it is unfortunate, there has been very little feedback volunteered. We've, I've reached out to some, some folks and asked for feedback, but, but very little have actually, since that meeting, come back in and, and asked questions and looked at properties, kind of like what we've, even before I was on board, Buford was asking those in public meetings, and, and we've gotten very little feedback. I fully expect there to be pushback, and, and it's easy to push back when, when you don't try to help something along.
Well, I got a call a couple of weeks ago, there was a meeting about this in Barnwell, by just citizens who were against it, and just to ask, you know, what they were against, again, you know, most everything listed didn't have anything to do with the build-two line or the parking in the rear. You know, one big item contention seems to be the drive-through, that's something that could probably be worked out easily, but we could, you know, allow for a single drive-through if it's part of the building and not an overhang where it's, you know, not adding a lot of asphalt and, you know, siding, just, you know, kind of like the little Revco pharmacy hat over there, where you just sort of pull up, and it's not like a real big monstrosity, but that'd be probably something that can be compromised out.
Well, and I think you'll, you'll see our.
Nonconforming use and stuff is what I've heard most of the issues about.
You're right.
People concerned about that, and I started there.
I was told tonight by somebody that was there for another part of the hearing, that don't take the, I'll tell you almost verbatim what they said, don't take the lack of involvement by, of people calling, not calling staff or, or us as the indication that they, you know, that there's nothing up.
Right.
It is up, they're meeting.
Oh, yes.
We've offered to go, I mean, a number of us have offered to go, they're not calling us either, but it is, it apparently is not pretty. All they want to talk about at these meetings, from what I heard tonight, was the negative aspects of it, which I, to me, can't figure out what the negative aspects are, and maybe we just need, need to make it real, real simple.
Well, and I will say, what, what the draft we're working on, will have some significant changes. We don't want to completely redo this, so it's a foreign concept, but I will say, some of the people we've talked to have brought up some good examples. I mean, I think there are concepts that this originally had that are good planning concepts around the country, but it, it didn't meet some of the local, you know, what, kind of what Fairhope is. And I think there's some valid points they make in that, so I hope what we have is still worth doing, but addresses some of those nonconformities.
I think we could simplify it tremendously, I think we could cut out all the different zones, I think we could simplify it down to the build-two, the drive-through, and the parking in the rear, and then not restate.
I, I disagree with you, I think one of the big problems was a build-two line that is six and a half miles long. And if you'll just give an opportunity to let me present those ideas, I think you'll see that in a way that, and, and I think that is some of the, other than the nonconformities, will help some of the other folks that have, we've talked to, because, you know, it, it gives a little bit more flexibility with what we've talked about with the form-based zoning, gives, gives applicants a little bit more flexibility, but still gives us a, an aesthetic that, that can be unique to Fairhope. So I think that's where we're.
Yeah, and when it, when it comes to that time, I'm thinking not just of us, but whoever else is in the audience, I think it would be very useful to have some kind of a bullet point of, here's what's required by our current zoning period, and then here's what we're proposing, so we can weed out the people who just are opposed to things that are already enforced today.
Sure, there's some just anti-governmental, I'll tell you exactly, I, I know about some of those conversations in the meeting, and there's misinformation spread, there's a petition going around, and that it does address what's out there. And you have to be sensitive to what they're seeing, because they haven't seen our proposal, because we've been talking to other people. So right now, all they know is the last document that we've published, and there's a petition that came out a couple of weeks ago. Well, it's kind of funny that a petition come out about something that's been sitting dormant for, you know, a few months, because we've, we've done exactly what we said we were gonna do, we were gonna listen, and we were gonna have conversations, and we've been doing that with anyone willing to. So it, it's, I, I hope that those people that are so opposed to this see the effort we've put into at least meeting halfway, if not even more so, so.
There's such a big group of them around Barnwell, out of the city limits, and people that, you know, aren't even affected by the ordinance, but they've been taught that they're gonna be, you know.
They're gonna get grabbed up.
To it, is what they're.
Exactly, and there, there's just some, there's some, if y'all familiar with the slippery slope arguments, what happens if? Well, what we're concerned about is not happens if, but what we know is gonna happen. And we know there are developers out there chomping at the bit to, to get these things, you know, get some of these properties that are residentially zoned and protected for years, as RA, if they can get those commercial and max it out, it's gonna affect the aesthetics, the traffic, all those things we're trying to make a difference in. So I will say, we will probably, to make this happen, because with our moratorium, and I want to, I want to be able to tell council this, this may require a couple of special meetings, you know, it's because I want to, once, once we get a proposal that's not final, I want feedback from, from planning commission, and it, we might need to have a, a couple of special meetings just for Grino, if you're willing, within the next few months to kind of, because even still, if we have a moratorium, the way we're looking at the schedules, the long delays we have in the advertisement requirements, it, it can be, I was shocked. We, first thing I say is, we gotta change these advertisements, because that, it, it is drastic here, with some of the deadlines and all, the, the gaps, so.
Well, the, the other thing they, they mentioned was that a lot of people don't, are not gonna be involved, because they're convinced that it's all in perception, they're, they're, they're convinced that, that it's already a done deal. And I'm trying to assure the, the people that I talk to that it's not, but.
I, I, I don't know what to do about that one, except for keep doing the right thing.
Keep trying to involve them, that's all you can do.
Well, we probably need to bring the city council into some of these meetings that we have, to make sure, you know, that we've got, you know, a modicum of support on their side, because if, you know, they feel like it's too politically much of a hot potato for an issue like that, you know, not a lot of reason to, you know, waste a lot of staff time on something that they're not willing to.
Well, and I'll say, we also, we, I, I don't know the math, I haven't been keeping track, but as many people, I've talked to, I've talked longer to about the same number of people that are opposed to it, but there's a, there is a lot of people that, that want, because I think a lot of folks that, especially that are residential zoned, might feel they're gonna be stuck with that. So those are one group that's, and then there's another community out, out there that is, wants this, and is just not as vocal about it.
Ninety-five percent of people I've talked to want it, but they're not affected by it.
That's the ticket.
As financially speaking, so they're not up here.
That's the problem, that's the problem, you got a lot of people for it, that don't have a, they don't have a dog in the fight, for the most part.
You had about 40 people who were really concerned about their specific piece of property, period.
Yeah.
And you had about 40, 50 more that, you know, were out of the city limits, that a number of which talked to me and later and said, hey, I'm not worried about it, because I don't have a dog in the home.
Yeah.
Now, whether they've been convinced lately that they do, I don't know, but, you know, it looked to me like there were, you know, 25, 35 people that, you know, just specifically were concerned about the, you know, their specific property value, what they could do with their business.
Well, and, and now, I, I think it was the first meeting was when we had the announcement to make a mailing for property owners. I don't agree with that at all, an overlay district, by its definition, is the, is a communal effort. It looks at something, and we have basically given a voice as, not saying they shouldn't be included, and we shouldn't make a special outreach effort to talk to those property owners alone, but now we've given a special voice to, to a group that this is a community project, there are certainly people gonna be impacted, but they may be impacted positively. You know, the, the, the property values may go up, I don't think it's a given that property values are gonna go down, I think quite the opposite. But, you know, we have to remember that, just like the medical overlay district, airport overlay district, when you use that terminology, this is something for the benefit of the whole city, and that thoroughfare is a communal project, I'll be there.
Well, let, let, let me give you, let me give you one more now, because I, I can talk to it after 42 years of dealing with it here. When you do, when, when you give people a voice, now, I'm not arguing about giving them a voice, but when you give them an alternative, and the alternative is this pristine view over here of a beautiful corridor, maybe it's an artist's rendition, and a garbage dump, which one of these would you prefer?
Sure.
The opposite, when you've only got, when you're giving them a choice of two things, there's everything and its brother in between.
Yeah.
There is, and, and to me, you can't really hang your hat on the fact that 90% of the people that participated in that, in that, uh.
Visual preference.
Visual preference.
No.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't mean anything to me.
You, you can't hang your hat on that, I completely agree, but what you can hang your hat on is having a public meeting after public meeting, and giving those people that disagree with that visual preference study a platform to come in and share their thoughts. And we've done that time and time again, that, that was, process was started before I got here, and we've continued that process.
I, I disagree, though, I think the visual preference means something.
Oh, yeah, it's a tool.
At Fairhope, and you could say, do you prefer the Big Lots Shopping Center, which was done in the 1970s? Do you prefer the Piggly Wiggly Shopping Center, done in the 1980s? Or do you prefer the Public Shopping Center, which was done in 2000s? You can't even see from Highway 98, and I think if you ask most reasonable people in Fairhope, which of those shopping centers do you rank as far as most to least attractive? I think it's a no-brainer.
Well, sure is, but you can't see public from the highway, but when was the last time something like Del Shamps, or Piggly Wiggly, or Big Lots was done anywhere in Fairhope?
Well, we're about to have it done a ton out there by Walmart, and, and, you know, and I think we'll have more and more on Grino Road coming up. And I think we need to decide, and what we've typically done is we've only allowed rezonings by PUD, which is not fair for people that have fewer than three acres.
I agree with that.
And so we're trying to say, what, what can we do to keep these, you know, and I tell you, when, when, you know, one of the people in the meeting said, you know, tell me some, some buildings you think are unattractive, I could have rattled off a list of them, but, you know, I'm not gonna fall for that bait, but there are quite a few that are unattractive, you know, one of which is a very recently built building that just happens to be right outside of the city limits, unfortunately.
Well, let me, let me brief.
It's this close to being attractive, and it's got a whole additional drive area that it doesn't even need out there, you know, it's like, why do we have a service road on a one, you know, on a one doctor's office building? And all that extra 20 feet of asphalt, you know, why couldn't that be landscaping and just regular ingress, egress like everybody else has? But that's the problem with the.
Because he got, because he got his builder that builds it the way he wanted to build it.
You know, outside of the city limits, so, so I think there are plenty of examples, but, but I just think that, you know, we need to do what we can.
And, and I agree, and I do, I want to reiterate, the visual preference study was only a tool. And then what you see, what, what you, you get, and I think Fairhope did this phenomenal, because I think some of the criticism was transparency and not, you know, doing that, meeting after meeting, and at some point, it, it's not fair for a city to provide that platform and not get any feedback, but as soon as you propose something, just strike, and it's like that tiger in the grass approach. You know, not be a part of the conversation to make something better, just try to stop anything that gets approved. And if we keep treating things that way, we're, we're not, I think we're gonna be a victim to, to development as it grows.
But that's human, that's the way human nature has developed now. People come that are opposed, nobody comes that's in favor of.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's human nature now. How many, how many people came tonight that were in favor of RSA doing what they were gonna do?
Right.
Nobody.
Well, but, but nobody, and we're not asking people to come to this project to come make it.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, it was Richard, it was Richard, that's everyone.
But we're not asking people in that sense to come and make a project better, get on the design team and start, we are on the Grino. We're asking for input.
But it's, I'm just telling you, that's human nature now.
Well, and, and I'll tell you one thing also, and, and you can ask, you know, any major real estate developer that you know, when you take the national builders and the national developers, when they come into a community, they will do the least that they have to do, but if you have a high bar, they don't even blink or complain about it, they just do it.
Well, absolutely.
And, and, and they don't, you know, it's the local people that bitch and bawl about, oh, why do I have to put these extra trees here? Why do I have to have this buffer here? National builders don't even think twice, they just, you know, that's the rule, there it is.
Right.
You know, I've gotta have that face, I can't have a still face, okay, here's.
You're right.
Design 14, okay, I have to have this kind of landscaping, I mean, they've been to Savannah before, they've been to Charleston. You know, they know what they're doing, you know.
They're familiar with those processes.
And it's funny, you look at places like Savannah and Charleston and Gainesville, Florida, and places that have had the highest and most aggressive zoning of all, and how are those property values?
I mean, I don't think there's anything to debate in that sense.
And then go and look at places that have had no zoning, and how are those property values? Look at Airport Boulevard right now, how many vacancies are on? values? Look at Airport Boulevard right now. How many vacancies are on Airport Boulevard?
Right.
Property values are lower on Airport Boulevard now than they were 27 years ago.
That's over and over again. You can show example, example. If property values are only concerned, I don't, I think that's a no-brainer. You know, this is the way to go. But there are other, you know, some of the feedback we've heard is the people that have been there 80 years, and maybe priced out of that level of development. But if they want to do something now, the cost, you know, so that, we got to be sensitive to that. Some of those, you know, the nonconformities were an issue. We got to be sensitive to that. You know, I think there.
Okay, okay. I'm going to shut up, and I'm going to give you one more, though.
Okay, come on.
What you need to understand is the way this city has been in the past bunch of years. And who was excluded in the, in the, in the development areas that were developed on the Greeno Road, for example, for long, long periods of time? Those that got excluded, you know, all the way down the line. And there was a lot way down to the south and everything north of Fairhope Avenue. That's the taste that people have got about what, you know, what this community is about. You got to change it.
Well, and I think, that kind of gets to fundamentally what we're doing here, because I think the vision that started this conversation on Greeno almost changes this, which comes naturally. I think first land use plan I saw was in 1954, that looked at like Fairhope Avenue and Greeno, you know, the couple of those commercial nodes and maybe a village. Well, that concept is changing from a village concept to a corridor along Greeno Road. And most of the time, when you get a state highway and it's four-lane, you notice the pictures that were in visual preference study, you look at some of those concepts of new urbanism, it doesn't happen on a four-lane highway. You know, it's a boulevard, it's a, you know, but not a state-approved highway. We now have a partner. So it's almost changing from corridor planning, understanding that those residential is probably not the highest use of the property along there, and we need to be able to address that in that transition. If we don't, I think we're kind of back to the village, you know, if that's a village, if those intersections along the state highway are a village now, we're back in the same boat of now we're going to, we're this nebulous village concept that's got an asterisk on a map, and which one's in that area and which one's not. We don't know. It's subjective. And I think you're, those things are strengthening, because I don't think a lot of those were evil. I think some of those are staff looking and going, ah, the tip of this asterisk is in here. I don't know if that's a village or not, but I don't.
That was not a good plan.
So that, I think that's the fundamental, fundamentally what we're looking at here along those corridors.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we've got one more.
Oh, what do we have?
What about what?
Your son tried to go.
Commissioners, if you will indulge me for just a brief moment.
You're not talking about densities again, are you?
No, sir. No, sir. What I'd like to just simply introduce tonight, I do not have any document for your review. I just simply want you to know a concept that is being evaluated at the staff level. That is of possibly creating a family subdivision process similar to that used by Baldwin County. So that way, a qualifying piece of property in the planning jurisdiction outside the city limits could have a slightly more streamlined process for obtaining a minor subdivision, provided that it checks all the boxes. The planning commission may not have comfort level with letting that be a staff-level approval. We'll come back with you at the next meeting with some more details. Just simply wanted to introduce the concept tonight and determine if the commission just really was, had any serious concerns about us doing that before we proceed.
That are just straight out, haven't been involved with them, that is, that's a no-brainer for staff.
Yes, sir. Now, I'll say this, and I appreciate the commissioner's comments, it would probably involve a requirement that there would be no re-subdivision of those components of that subdivision for one year. So that way, obviously, the city cannot prevent conveyance of properties if it is initiated by a family member. Certainly, we don't have regulatory authority over that, nor would we be able to enforce it. But I think it would be reasonable that the re-subdivisions of those properties would be held out for at least a year. But where it's qualified, where there's no infrastructure to be installed, no fire hydrants to be installed, all the lots run upon a paved publicly maintained road, they check all the boxes. If we had the ability to approve it at the staff level, allow them to get their plat and record it, we could then come back to the planning commission and just simply memorialize in the minutes what we did and what we approved, if that was necessary. Just wanted to introduce that concept to the planning commission tonight.
One comment. When you're looking at having the front, did you say a paved road?
Front upon a paved publicly maintained road.
No. You can't take a 40-acre piece of property and have it logically front all on a paved road. Make it an ease, think about an easement, something wide enough that in the future, if there was a development done, that the adequate width on an easement is available.
And that's a great comment, Commissioner. And what we will do is we'll very carefully evaluate, we'll very carefully cross-reference the county's requirements, because, and I think the way to deal with that is that if we can evaluate at the staff level, because we have both Mr. Peterson and Mr. Johnson who can assist us, if we have a piece of property that a family is requesting a subdivision, and if it's clear that there won't be, or is very unlikely there would ever be a desire, or even a possibility, that some type of access, some type of right-of-way would ever have to be built, and one, built at all, two, ever dedicated to the city, then I don't think there's a reason to be so draconian in not allowing easements, because we require that, you know, certainly within the city limits, and certainly within our realm of streets that the city maintains, certainly. So that would be something we could certainly evaluate.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor say aye.
Yo, yes.